Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban, a multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole, and I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued, to protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years, and I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator comptroller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today, and I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community, and vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator comptroller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning, everybody. It is 8:30 a.m. on Thursday, December 20th, 2018, and this is a Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. We will begin today with roll call.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Antor.
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Commissioners Breevy.
Here.
Bulkowski.
President.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Cornike.
President.
Mast.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Skaggs.
Stuck.
Here.
Talan.
Here.
Vonck.
Here.
Voorhees.
President.
Womack.
Here.
Chair Saulfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We will then call on Commissioner Bulkowski to deliver an invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Chair. As part of the introduction, that needs no introduction, I simply need to note that the standing rule is that there can only be one Bulkowski on the commission, but it's unlimited on the number of Bulkowskys that are allowed in the chamber. So I would like to introduce the former county commissioner Dick Bulkowski.
Morning. It's an honor to be here with you all, and I just want to say a word of thanks for the service that you have given to the residents of Kent County these last few years. For those, I invite everyone here gathered and those listening to join me in prayer within their own faith tradition. God of Christmas spirit, it is in giving that we receive so much, and in paying attention to those who are poor and struggling in our community that our hearts are filled with joy. God of Christmas hope, we look forward to that promised day when differences don't lead to wars and violence, when children don't die for lack of clean water and medical attention, when equity and justice are known by all. And we pray this in God's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bulkowski, and thank you, former Commissioner Bulkowski. It was great to see you again. Hope all is going well. We'll move next to Agenda Item 5, and this is a Parks Master Plan Public Hearing. Okay, Matthew is gonna lead us off.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm here to talk about our five-year master plan and to provide you an update about what's in the master plan. I think we did a work session earlier this year and took your input then. We had public input, and so now this is the final draft. We can take a little bit more public input if there is any, and then we'll be finalizing it hopefully at the Board on the 3rd of January. So first thing, I just want to thank our internal staff. We created this, Kent County staff did, so that's a significant savings from using outside consultants to do this often. We did hire a survey, a public survey, but Dan DeLuft, Brian Mulligan, our former director Roger Sabine, especially Bob Pap, who authored much of this report, I want to specifically say thank you to them. The role of the plan is to be able to submit to the DNR for trust fund grants, obviously that's one of them, but also we need to make sure that we have a direction of what we want to see accomplished with our park system. So we gauge public support and interests, we identify special initiatives, and then we, the project plans, strategizes for our future. So our plan calls for continuing of ongoing priorities, many of which have been in the works for many years. So we have completed several acquisition projects like Lowell, Chief Hazy Cloud, and Two Rivers. We're also working on rounding out the footprint of Millennium Park and Wallfield Park. And then we want to work with the state of Michigan and our community to complete the Fred Meyer Pioneer Trail between Muscatawa and the county, and then we're going to continue to work on the White Pine Trail with our community as well. The county itself provides regional parks. We're the largest provider of regional parks, which are over 200 acres. And so we've identified some areas where there's deficiency in regional parks, and you can see these here in the map, and what we're looking to add and create regional parks. And our strategy is to work with our smaller parks and grow those. Obviously, this is dependent on funding, board support, and landowner interest. We've also identified some new opportunities that we want to pursue. First of all, we want to really create a dog park in 2019. We've identified some property, and we're working with the Parks Foundation to make this happen and to create a fundraising plan. We're also looking at creating off-leash opportunities at other parks during certain hours as a policy, to see if that is a good choice or not. You know, people will be able to play with their pets, run, and create community there. We're also, if you look at this map, wanting to work with the West Michigan Sports Commission on the need for rectangular fields that they've identified in this community. We don't know how we're going to accomplish that yet, but we're gonna take a hard look at that in the new year and see where we might be able to partner together for public-private partnerships. We also know that right now, 40% of our revenue that we create comes from user fees in our different park system. So one of the opportunities we have to look at that further is, we own several barns on different properties that we have right now, and looking at those as potential event usage at a higher fee for putting more money into our park system as a unique feature that might be non-competitive with other venues in the community, but something that's unique. And Wabasus Park, we have cabins at Wabasus Park that are highly utilized, and we need to look at if it makes more sense to expand on that or not as another opportunity to provide more revenue. All those would require business plans, and would have to come back to you as Commissioners. And last but not least, if you look at that, there's a kayak on that picture. The survey really taught, let us know that the public really wants more access to water in our community. We purchased a lot of property along rivers, and now we need to figure out how to activate that. So Two Rivers Park, other parks that we have, how do we make sure we have kayak launches and things like that for the community to access that water? And then the last thing that's in the plan is, we are being very strategic and intentional about working with the Parks Foundation right now, and how to create a strong relationship where we're partnering together on this five-year master plan. One of the key attributes of that fundraising would be maintenance reserve funds. We know that when we create new amenities or new parts, there's a maintenance cost that's long-term. And so as we explore working together in new ways and do public-private partnerships, knowing that we need to set up reserve funds to maintain what we create, it's something that we want to look at. The Parks Foundation is open to that concept. We do not know how much we need to raise, or what the reserve fund amount should be, or any of those kinds of parts and pieces, but we want to be clear that we're having those conversations right now. So that's a brief summary of the Parks Master Plan, and happy to move forward, answer questions if there are any.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to comment on this. This is not public comment, just to be clear. This is a public hearing on the Parks Master Plan. So if any public has a specific comment on the Parks Master Plan, now would be the time for that. I'm not seeing any...
Got one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would expect you to be able to say something. Good morning, Sam.
Wanted me to sit back there and remain silent. Holy moly. Good morning, Commissioners. Just on behalf of the Parks Foundation, wanted to reiterate kind of what we talked about in our last presentation last time I was here, how supportive we are of this plan, and of Matthew, and Al, and Dan, leading the Parks Department. We're having excellent conversations and relationships, and we look forward to implementing many of the recommendations in this five-year master plan to make our park system the even further successful entity that it is right now. So thank you so much. We look forward to supporting this and working with you to get this through to the DNR and then implementing many of the recommendations in it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment or hearing, I should say, on the Parks Master Plan? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just briefly, wanted to comment on Matthew Van Zetten's comments with regard to collaboration effort and working with the West Michigan Sports Commission as we look at continuing to build up our infrastructure, having green space and activating that green space by programming. Certainly would be important for our residents and really for the county as a whole. So the Sports Commission's excited to play that role and partner with the county, and we look forward to seeing what we can do together.
Just for the record, tell everybody who you are and who you represent.
Thank you. Mike Gussweiler, President of the West Michigan Sports Commission.
Good, thank you. Any other public hearing or comment on the Parks Master Plan? Okay, I don't see any. Any Commissioner comments? I think I saw Commissioner Vonck.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Matt, as we go through the changes and evolution of the Parks Department, do you see any changes of oversight in how it operates and how we can operate differently or betterly, better with the local communities and residents to achieve some of these goals I know that you're having to play?
We're thinking about that, Commissioner. We know that a stronger relationship with the Parks Foundation and how they maybe seat boards might be an opportu, or seat board members, may be an opportunity for broader community input. So that's one avenue we're looking at, and we're also doing some benchmarking of other communities as well. So we are thinking about that, but we don't have a recommendation at this time.
I'd like to see a greater vision for our Parks Department. We've done a wonderful job at Millennium, and I think we could have Millennium too, someplace Wabasus Lake, or one of these other areas that you noted, and it'd be nice to see all that happen in the future for grandchildren and great-grandchildren.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, it just seems unusual not to have Roger here for this presentation. I just wanted to acknowledge him and all the great work he did. A lot of this is, you know, he was responsible for. Like Roger is, he wasn't really, he kind of flew under the radar, didn't want any acknowledgement, and we never really had a chance to say thank you other than, you know, personally. But anyhow, I just wanted to bring that up. And then one other thing I brought up at the finance meeting, right now we own a golf course that is under the purview of the Parks, and I really think we need to take a long look at that for a couple reasons. If you watch the market right now, golf courses are starting to drop like flies. We've had two of them up in my area. One's for sale, one just closed after being, it was there forever. And that's what's happening around the state. Golf isn't what it used to be, unfortunately. As a golfer, I'm kind of sad about that, but that's just the market. And diversely, the real estate market is extremely high right now, so there's quite a bit of value on that course, and I don't think it's gonna get a whole lot higher than what it is right now for land value. So I would like to, I already mentioned this once, but I think we need to take a look at that. So you don't need to comment on it, but I just think as a ward, we need to look at maybe getting out of the golf course business. Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Matthew. I'm taking a look at page 263, which is the coverage map, which I think lays out in the dotted red circles the areas of gaps in coverage. And I'm just, I'm curious why some parks seem to have the sort of distance circles around them and some don't. So, you know, there's a gap in South Central, but I think if you looked out the distances between Brewer Park and Douglas Walker Park and Dutton Shady Park and Paris Park, that you wouldn't find a gap there. Same with North Central where we've got Gordon Park. I'm just, I'm curious why, why this map is...
Yeah, so I think if we go to this slide here on the presentation, it might be more reflective perhaps of our most recent thinking. And so you can see the areas that we've identified as need for regional parks, and where we have gaps for those regional areas. And so we're gonna be looking at, you know, those opportunities in the future to try to figure out land ownership and whatnot. But again, this is all dependent on funding and how we might be able to fund these opportunities and landowner interest and things like that. I don't know if that really answers your question, Commissioner.
No, not really. I mean, maybe it does. I mean, are we not seeing the radius from the park because these aren't regional parks because they don't have 200 acres?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So these are the areas where we are, we would imagine that we're short the 200-acre standard. And so strategy one is grow our current regional parks when there's opportunity. Strategy two is take smaller parks, and where there's opportunity to create regional parks by adding, till we get to that 200-acre standard, that we do that.
Yeah, I guess I want to echo Commissioner Vonck on this issue. I think what I would like to see is a real vision for what we want our parks to look like. Some of that is in here, but I'm not sure that just trying to increase every small park to 200 acres is a vision. I know it was under the previous director, but I wonder if now's a good time to rethink that and focus on really specific areas that we want to create feature parks out of. I know on page 264, it says that the goal of 200 acres for a regional park is somewhat arbitrary. So my discussion on this would be just, you know, to accept this report, because we need to, but in the future to really look at where we might want to really focus on growing premier county parks.
I guess I would just share with you that the dog park, park trails, new amenities, development plans, there is a, there's some detail meat in terms of what we want to do next year, partnering with the Parks Foundation, in terms of adding amenities to different parks. Again, you know, we're working through those details right now, and we expect to be able to share more in the new quarter. This is a vision process, but I think you see today, there's two action requests to purchase property with some savings that we had from Health Holidays to meet towards these goals. And so I think we're doing some strategic work, and we can talk more later about some of that work. It's just we don't have all the funding lined up with the partnerships yet.
Yeah, I get it. I think, you know, there's obviously change going on in the department. I think it's a real good time to take a fresh look at it.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. As a member of the Kent County Parks Foundation, I just want to, again, thank them for their partnership with us, because we have our funding mechanism here that we put into our parks, but then we have a fabulous organization made up of people in the community who write their own checks in addition to what they pay in their taxes to help this particular gem for Kent County. And I just really want to shine on that and encourage anyone that has an additional passion beyond what they pay in their tax bill to continue to support the parks, to look at the Kent County Parks Foundation and what they do, and what a great collaboration that is, and what a wonderful asset it is for our county to have that ability to connect with that organization. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Matthew. We will consider the public hearing closed. Well, before we move on to the next section, I just, in addition to Dick Bulkowski, who provided the invocation, I can see our former Chair Sandy Frostinsma and former Commissioner Dick Bulkowski in the...
Dick Vandermolen.
I'm sorry, Dick Vandermolen, in our audience there. Welcome. Good to have all our former Commissioners there today, here today, so. We'll move now to public comment, and this is an opportunity to provide comments to the Commissioners. During the public comment period, speakers should state their name and address, as has been our practice for the past three years. We will be, comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Speaker will be notified at the two-minute mark that they have one minute to complete their comment, and will be told when the three minutes have been reached. A person may address the Board on matters or issues that are relevant to county government. A chair may disallow public comment that is unduly repetitious, not relevant to county government, or regarding matters not under consideration by the Board. We do ask that speakers line up in the queue and wait your turn to come forward and address the commission. So with that, we will begin. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm August True from 2958 Reed's Lake Boulevard Southeast. I've worked all my life in the trades and with my hands, and at one point in time, I became a homeless person and got to live in a tent in Michigan from May through October for two years while I was retraining to get skills to build machines. So I became homeless through no fault in my own, it was because of the workplace circumstances. And I can tell you what a homeless person's life is involved in, is you get up in the morning and you wonder where you're gonna get food and how you're gonna prepare it. And then you think about my hygiene. Okay, I gotta, I gotta clean up somehow. So that's what your life is. You aren't contributing to the community. So the Land Bank Authority, helping to end homelessness and provide alternatives to people, is a great thing. And it said that if the Land Bank Authority leaves at the local level, the state will pick it up. Well, I have a family member who is involved in the mental health process, and I'm not impressed with what the state does, how the state provides services to local people. I believe that people in the community find those that are in need, and yeah, it's a disjointed, crazy, wild kind of effort, but I don't believe that the state coming in here and taking over the Land Bank Authority and dictating how it will be done is gonna be in the best interest of the community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bob Smith. I live in Byron Center. I apologize, the last gentleman to speak about the parks brought up a point that caught my attention. He had suggested getting out of, you know, the county getting out of running a golf course. The Kaufman Golf Course is very near my home. Golf course usage as a whole may be in decline, but, you know, my wife and I really enjoy the Kaufman Golf Course. You know, it's a, it's a nice course. It's much more affordable than, than other golf courses in the area. They let, they let you bring alcoholic beverages. They don't sell it on-site, which makes it even more affordable. And, you know, it's, it's a nice afternoon. If usage of that particular golf course is in decline, I would suggest it's more a matter of promoting it to younger family people who want to get out and golf but can't necessarily justify the expense of going to one of the for-profit courses around town. You know, our county parks really aren't meant to be a profit center. They're, you know, meant to be a place that makes, you know, living in this county a little bit nicer, and I hope you would take that into consideration before considering shutting down what is actually a very nice golf course that we have here in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, we're not, that's not something we're considering doing, and I think the numbers for the golf course have actually been on the increase. That was just a comment that was made earlier, so just to be clear on that point. Okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Denny Sturdivet. I'm the chief executive officer for Dwelling Place of Grand Rapids, been in that role for 30 years, 101 Sheldon Southeast. Our organization owns and manages about 1,400 apartments across four counties, most of it in Kent County. I'm here to address the land bank question. This just sort of came up like a whirlwind in the last few days. You know, I'm concerned, number one, about how little time we have had, the public has had, to be able to work with you to help you understand the importance of the Kent County Land Bank to the, to the area of affordable housing. I think there's a lot of things. I read the report. I have it here. I think there's a lot of things in the report that may or may not be accurate, but I think there's a lot of stuff missing. There's a lot missing in this report about the impact on affordable housing in Kent County. There's one finding in the review, and I will just read it quickly, external support. It's recognized that the Kent County Land Bank Authority is viewed by the Michigan Land Bank and other communities across the Midwest as a model for how, how land banks can evolve from focusing exclusively on elimination of blight and clearing titles to impacting the work of nonprofits and others to create opportunities for affordable housing. It's ironic to me that the Kent County Commission would consider eliminating a model, a Midwest model, for, to address a major problem, which we, which the county has also tried to be involved with in affordable housing, in trying to address both homelessness and emergency housing, and permanent affordable housing, and permanent supportive housing. And it's a tool, it's a model, it's a tool that isn't available outside of the Land Bank Authority, the state enabling legislation that created in the first place. I've read that they think the state land bank could help to fill the role. We worked with the state land bank in Muskegon Heights. We have a property there that we purchased through the land bank. The land bank, the state land bank, has its jurisdiction across the entire state, and has a lot of limitations on how much it can do, how much innovation it can be engaged in. Kent County Land Bank, I think, has demonstrated over the last few years that it's, it's one of the most innovative operations in the entire state and the Midwest, and again, it's recognized in here. I recognize, there's comments in there about mission creep. Some people don't like David Allen's personality. A lot of people don't like my personality, but I don't think they're gonna kill Dwelling Place because they don't like my personality. I think... because they don't like my personality. I think you need to look at taking us, why, why do we need to do this today? Why can't we take a longer look at this? Look at some of the issues and concerns that are raised here, but also take time to look at the real impact that the land bank has had outside of just simply working with foreclosed properties, but the real-
Thank you. You're at three minutes.
Pardon me?
You're, you're at three minutes.
All right. Anyway, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dan Hitma, 7955 Byron Station Court, Byron Center, Michigan. I'm here as a former elected official, township official, supervisor, and also assessor, and I've been involved in the real estate business all my life. You know, as far as the review, I know the county commission has reviewed this since 2016, so it's been like two years. And there was like 13 different public meetings. I attended many of them. Both, some of you did, of course, here on the committee. So I don't think this has just come up all of a sudden. This has been reviewed since 2016. I agree, and I have also read the report. Some of it I agree with, some of it I don't. But I agree with the statement in the report that the 550 funding reduces local government resources. And that's all you, that's all I hear about here is how are we going to fix the parks up? How are we going to do this? This reduces government resources, and the improved property value will not make up the difference. It's a loser. Kent, Kent County Land Bank Innovable Lab is a tax drain. General fund revenues have been reduced by the 550 and by millions on the loss of the tax sales revenues. That would have helped a lot of park improvements. I'm here to support the motion to terminate the intergovernmental agreement. The Kent County Land Bank Innovable Lab is not needed in Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Lori Craft, Vice President for Community Investment at Grand Rapids Community Foundation. And I think most of you are familiar with the Grand Rapids Community Foundation. We were early supporters of the Kent County Land Bank, providing grant support in the amount of $80,000 and $1 million in loans, which have all been repaid. I think we really saw the land bank, it is a valuable tool that is available to government in order to preserve affordable housing, and it has been used as such. And I think it's really disappointing that granted, it may have been going on for a long time, but that this decision is being brought up and voted on within a matter of days without, without much notice at all. Many of the nonprofits that have, that this has assisted in their capacity to do this work are here today, I think. And Denny just spoke very eloquently about the work that the land bank has done for them and how it has assisted them in preserving affordable housing. I think it's short-sighted to disband this entity based on what appear to be personnel and personal issues, and the timing and short notice are, are just unconscionable. The Commission says that it wants to support affordable housing, but your actions today don't reflect that. This is a vote against preservation of affordable housing, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rusty Richter, 5665 Ivan Rest in Wyoming, Michigan. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. I have been in the real estate business for nearly 30 years, have during that time attended most of the auctions, the property tax auctions for Kent County, have bought dozens and dozens of properties through the auction. And when the land bank first started, it was controversial from the very beginning. This has not been a slam dunk by any stretch of the imagination. I mean, for 10 years, we've been wrestling. You all have been wrestling with this. Two years ago, there was committee hearings investigating the land bank. I was at all or most of those. This isn't a sudden thing, but during that time and in buying properties, we put over three dozen properties online, our company, through the private sector, put three, three dozen properties online that are functioning. They're affordable properties. We currently have 14 of them in the city of Wyoming that have been reconditioned, refa, remodeled, and beautiful homes for affordable housing, all sold through our companies. There are no, in the enabling legislation, there are no extra special powers granted to a land bank. I know that's talked about a lot, but the land banks through the enabling legislation from the state legislature cannot operate in some universe above the law. That, so if there's that idea out there, that they're the only ones that can get a quiet title action or an expedited quiet title action, I can get a quiet title action done as quickly as the land bank, because we all have to abide by the exact same laws. So we can do it at the private sector. We always could do it at the private sector. And I would encourage you today to vote to terminate the land bank and allow the private sector to do what it, what it can do best. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Samika Pickens. I am a resident of South Town, Grand Rapids. I'm here to state that we don't need to terminate the land bank at this time. I believe we don't need to turn over rights to our state to assist our locals. I also believe that the decision to close the land bank was rushed, although he stated that it's been going on since 2016. I didn't hear of this until two days ago. The decision should be postponed into the city of Grand Rapids officials have, as well as the community as a whole, had the opportunity to weigh in. The point of the land bank was to assist with the housing crisis and the housing need, and I feel that as though it has assisted, there is still work that needs to be done. If we terminate that now, that work will be unfinished. Why will we leave something half-done? Also, I feel that removing the land bank, I feel that if there is an issue with the land bank administration or personnel, we need to consider removing or replacing that situation. I was just quoted something. If the schools fail, we don't close our schools. We re, we reassess things, and if we need to, we bring in different administrations and personnel into the schools. You don't just, just because the personnel is failing, we don't just get rid of it just like that. We need to reassess things and think things over, and also let our community, which it affects, have a weigh-in on it. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Hahn. I'm a resident at 420 Sweet Street in Grand Rapids, and I also happen to work with the Healthy Homes Coalition, which works on, among other things, the problem of lead poisoning in Grand Rapids. I want to thank you for the opportunity. I did get a chance to correspond with you, but I'd just like to underscore that the land bank has been an opportunity for tremendous collaboration in our community. You have a lot of partners here today that are speaking exactly to that collaboration. Those are voices that in this process recently have not been engaged and need to be engaged. And I'm not saying they need to be engaged for a long period of time, but they need to be engaged. If that's 60 days, that would be meaningful engagement, and we need to honor that collaboration. Land bank comes to you at virtually no cost, and I can tell you as a resident of North End of Grand Rapids that the benefit is huge. It's not a loss in tax revenue. When New Development Corp develops a house on College Avenue next, last month in my neighborhood, it's not just the tax loss on that property that came through the land bank, but it's the improvement to the value of the neighboring properties, the property on the left, the property on the right, the one across the street. So it's a, at best, at worst, it's a wash. At best, it's an improvement not only for the family that gets to benefit from the home that's been developed, but also the neighbors that see blight removed and their property values improved. I also think about your mission statement in protecting quality of life. And I think about the three-year-old boy that will move into that house and will have a lead-safe home to grow up in. Tackling the lead problem is one of the things that you are very concerned about and I'm very concerned about. And this land bank creates one of the opportunities that the county has put into place to take action on that problem. We're looking to take action in other ways, but this is one place where we've already taken action. And to remove it would be stepping in the wrong direction to solve that problem. I'd like you to honor good process. I'd like you to take additional time to meet with these stakeholders, 30 days, 60 days, to talk this through. I'm not saying that the land bank necessarily needs to be preserved. I'm saying we need good process. We need to engage the community in the opportunity. I understand that you have stakeholders, constituents, that may not agree. Listen to them, but listen to those who also value the land bank. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Francis. I live at 2631 Gulf Ridge in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm a member of the Commercial Alliance of Realtors. We believe in the concept that the land bank model of disposition of tax foreclosed properties can be an effective model, especially in challenging economic times when the number of such foreclosed properties is higher, if used fairly, correctly, and for a finite period of time. However, the market has rebounded successfully to a point where available properties are few and inventory levels at historical lows. Investors are seeking properties in all conditions and financial situations. The Commercial Alliance of Realtors believes that the funding structure and practices of the Kent County Land Bank that rely on the sale of tax foreclosed properties to the Kent County Land Bank before the public tax auction is an unfair practice that violates, violates the concept of free and open markets, and may be a violation of the county's duties and policies with respect to the purchase and resale of tax foreclosed properties. Preventing a free and open bidding process diminishes the opportunities otherwise available when properties are offered on the open market to any qualified buyer. In addition, the sale of these properties to the land bank prior to the auction significantly reduces the county's revenue from the tax, from the tax sale at the time the county was trying to eliminate a deficit within its budget. With properties being sold within days of coming on the market, there is no reason for the land bank to preempt potentially higher-priced sales and additional tax revenue. The Commercial Alliance of Realtors is also opposed to Kent County Land Bank's purchase of properties that are not in a blighted condition, but simply vacant. The purchase of these properties is outside the scope of the original mission of the land bank. Considering today's market conditions, low property inventories and few foreclosed or vacant properties, it is our position that the Kent County Land Bank has fulfilled its purpose and should be terminated. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Charlie Hoats. I live at 6641 Fencer Court in Caledonia. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm also a member of the Commercial Alliance of Realtors, and I am the Chair of its Political and Government Affairs Committee. And I'm here today, along with several of our members, to speak in favor of dissolving the Kent County Land Bank. As John just said, as an organization, Carr believes that the Kent County Land Bank was a well-intentioned idea, perhaps questionably executed. Their ability to purchase tax foreclosed properties prior to public auction is an unfair practice that short-circuits the concept of an open market and may also violate the county's duties to, to get the most out of tax foreclosed properties. The land bank should really be the buyer of last resort, not the preferential broker of blighted county-owned properties. Your December 2018 review of the Kent County Land Bank would seem to conclude that they've made a significant departure from their original mission of quickly returning to productive use. The name change, the elimination of any reference to Kent County, their significant activity outside of Kent County, their partnerships with single contractors to do their development, and the presence of a licensed real estate broker on their staff would all seem to point to the conclusion that they've ceased to be a land bank and have simply become a traditional residential real estate developer. Additionally, the need for the land bank as it was in 2011 with the down market just simply isn't there anymore. So I would ask all of you to vote today in favor of dissolving the Kent County Land Bank. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patrick Moni. I live in Allegan County, but work here in Grand Rapids in Kent County. My, I'm a member of the Commercial Alliance of Realtors, and I guess I would share the opinion of some of the other members of our association in that the land bank was a tremendous idea and was created with noble purposes. But now we have found that it is costly to the county. While I don't doubt that when we have a property that is, its condition is improved, the neighboring property's values are improved. However, in my personal experience, while working with people in our local community that had sought to invest a significant portion of their personal life savings in order to solve some of these same lower-income housing problems, have decided not to do that deal because competing against the county is not a wise way of investing your life savings. So consequently, we pulled out of that deal, just as you would look at any investment you might entertain. You have to consider the risks, not just this year or next year, but who are the competitors in this area? And are we strong enough, smart enough, and a risk-taker enough in order to compete with them? Competing against a municipality with taxing authority is a difficult proposition. So in my own experience, I can tell you that a family decided not to invest in Kent County because of the land bank. And I would bet if we looked farther, we would find a lot of Realtors and real estate investors that said, yeah, I was going to do that. Frankly, I'm going to do it somewhere else or not do it at all.
Two minutes.
Because, did you say three minutes?
Two.
Oh, yeah.
You have one minute left.
I think that we would create a greater good by deciding what are the objectives of Kent County as it relates to real estate development. Not picking winners or losers like particular investors or particular Realtors or particular contractors, but saying, we want to have affordable housing in this area and help an investor to accomplish the planning that Kent County engages in. I believe that we would have access to more capital and would cause a greater improvement within our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Max Grover, live and work in Kent County, 2565 Belfast Avenue Southeast. I'm with a group of Commercial Alliance Realtors as well as a board member, and I'm here as well to ask that we dissolve the Kent County Land Bank for the time being. I think the original purpose of the Kent County Land Bank has been served, and if you go out and look at vacancy rates across Kent County, they're at an all-time low. And, and right now, the Kent County Land Bank is competing against the private sector, and that's just not right. And I don't think that was the intention of the land bank. I guess the other thing I'd like to remind, reminder, reiterate, I guess, you guys, you guys know this better than I do, but the land bank is a tool that if needed, can always come back. So it's dissolving it in this market, this completely opposite market that we're in today than when we were in '08, '09. And I think, you know, having that as a tool and available is great, but I think we should dissolve it today based on market conditions and, and its mission creep of, of its original fight blight, and, and now it's cherry-picking some of the best properties in Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
My name's Frank Lynn. I live at 3446 Devon Northeast. That's in Grand Rapids Township. And I'm a member of Grand Rapids Homes for All. I've worked on affordable housing for 30 years. I've worked with a couple of you on the, on the commission on affordable housing. And I got to say that the, the market doesn't really work. It didn't work before the, the housing crisis to provide affordable housing and to abolish the land bank temporarily. We worked real hard to get the land bank, and we need it. And every one of you needs it. We need, there's an affordable housing crisis across the, of the county. I can tell you stories about women my wife works with at the Franciscan Convent in Lowell who can't afford the housing they're living in. I worked with Commissioner Bolkowski on affordable housing in Cedar Springs and how unaffordable housing was because of transportation and whatever. And in Sparta, there's a shortage of affordable housing in Kentwood, in Wyoming, in Granville. And yes, there's an affordable housing crisis in Grand Rapids, but it's a county-wide crisis. You can't bury your head in the sand. We need the grant, the Kent- We need the Kent County Land Bank to address this problem. And I'd especially like to recognize Commissioner Mast, who's worked on affordable housing for many, many years. It's his last meeting. Out of respect to Commissioner Mast, you ought to postpone at least this discussion, and have a sensible vote later in the year. Thank you.
Hard to follow up. All right. My name is Alex. I work, or I'm sorry, I live at 864 Belclaire. I work in population health and healthcare. I work in housing, and my focus is the connection between health and housing. One of the things that I've noticed, listening to these comments, is that you have organizations that work inside of this space that make sure that there is healthy access to housing, and then you have individuals that are private that are coming up and saying no to the land bank. One of the other things I keep hearing is that the housing market has changed, that houses are selling in a matter of days, that qualified buyers. I would like to say, qualified for who? If you take that and you break it down and you look at the families that are at risk, the families that are trying to find a healthy, affordable space to live, that problem still exists, and the land bank helps support our work inside of that issue. When you look at all of you as members, you represent different areas of the county, you need to look at who you're representing. It's not just the few that are able to go in. Most of those home sales are cash offers. Most of those people are able to buy other homes. We need to look at the people that need your support, that need the assistance, that need the cooperation between the county and those individuals and then this organization that helps to facilitate that work. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hello. My name is Jeremy Droux, Executive Director of LinkUp and residents of southeast Grand Rapids. I wanted to also comment and just acknowledge and support the land bank and encourage you to keep this institution operating and functioning. The work that they have done to address blight in communities has been significant, and it has not gone away. I can show you many properties that continue to be blighted, that continue to be challenged that the land bank is well-equipped and uniquely positioned to be able to address. I have heard a lot of comments about the tax foreclosed property process and how that has changed, and just also want to point out that the responsibility of the tax foreclosed property in Kent County, like every other county in the state of Michigan, is the responsibility of the county treasurer. And the county treasurer is responsible for the disposition of that property, and the county treasurer has recommended and consistently recommend that the land bank is approved in an appropriate way to go about disposing of these properties. They have said that in the past, he continues to say that today. Over the last few months, this commission has heard from communities asking to address the issues with the sheriff's department and said that because it is an elected office, an elected position, that that agency is responsible to deal with these things, and it's not the place of this body to address issues of another elected official. And yet, we have an elected county treasurer who is responsible for this task, who says this to be an appropriate way to go forward, and I just suggest that you work, continue to work with him, and follow the direction that he is suggesting as an elected official responsible with this task. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Helen Lehman. I'm the Executive Director of New Development Corporation, and we're located at 205 Carrier Northeast, and we've worked for the last 21 years in the north end of Grand Rapids. I thought I'd bring today a couple of photos for you of the so-called cherry-pick properties that we've purchased. This one, we just finished. You might have seen it on Channel 13 yesterday. A young family with a three-year-old will be moving into this lead paint-free house in January. We're extremely proud of it. We've partnered with Horizon Bank and with MISTDA to make that happen. We've also partnered with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to help get rid of that lead paint. This one is one that we purchased from the land bank in October. When the photographer from Channel 17 came yesterday, he said, "My goodness, you can see all the way through this basement, from one side to the other." Yep, 56 feet, 56 feet of foundation. We're absolutely destroyed in this house. So blight still exists, folks. It still exists, and we need to deal with it creatively and leverage every dollar we can bring to Kent County to deal with it. And that's something that the nonprofit partners of the land bank have been doing since its inception. Couple of notes. Max, I hope you got a really great house like this too that you bought from the land bank, because I'm hoping that you also took care of the lead-based paint for the future people moving into that house. It doesn't cost a dime of general fund money for Kent County to leverage the millions of dollars that the housing folks have brought in to this county. Doesn't cost you a dime of general tax dollars. I want you to know that state law trumps any decision of this body, and state law says that the properties that come through the tax evasion process come to the county. The county makes the municipalities whole, and the municipalities, including the city of Grand Rapids, have rights of first refusal on this property.
You're at two minutes.
And the city of Grand Rapids is not going to abdicate the responsibility for that. They will not let these properties go back to the auction, and we will fight that tooth and nail. It was a lousy process then, it's a lousy process now, and I'm happy to provide any of you of tours and horror stories of former auction properties. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tom Ralston, 335 Bridge Street Northwest. Been a real estate investor in Grand Rapids for the last 10 years, moved here from Nebraska. I feel like I've seen a lot of ups and downs in our market, but I'm here today to speak in support of the land bank. As a private investor, I feel like it's easy to argue the other way and say that the land bank has been a negative impact on private investment, but I believe that, in this case, the land bank is serving a really good purpose. I feel that it's maybe had a little bit of mission creep and a little bit of things going sideways on it, but I think that the committee here today should vote to keep the land bank. Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Chris Bennett. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development at Building Place of Grand Rapids at 101 Sheldon Boulevard. I'm here as well to speak in favor of the land bank. I was here on Tuesday as well for the vote Tuesday morning. I quite frankly find the notion that we should be dissolving the land bank because they've completed their task to be disingenuous at best. I think it's very, very simple to document the fact that there is still a need for an institution like this, there's still a need to have this resource available to the people of Kent County to help foster the affordable housing that's so desperately needed in our community. I think it's also to suggest that somehow the private market will just take over this and pick up the sword and carry it and help us keep this momentum going forward is also disingenuous. I don't think there's the desire or the ability for that to happen. I really think this body is doing itself a huge disservice in its mission to serve the community by hamstringing us and taking this institution away today. Thank you.
Green Dick.
Good morning, everyone. My fellow colleagues, and I'm here this morning to speak about the West Michigan Sports Commission item that's on the ballot. I have about nine colleagues here, and they've agreed to give me their three minutes. So nine times, nine times three is 26.
Dick, you know that doesn't work that way. Nice try.
However, I'll just limit it to this. The county has supported the sports commission right from the very beginning. The county put up a million dollars 10, 11 years ago to start it, and we've got a lot of documentation about that. So I just would urge you to support this resolution to help us a little more, and I'll guarantee you that it'll be well-spent, taken care of. So thank you, and Merry Christmas to everyone, and good day.
Thank you.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Ryan Schmidt. I work for ICCF, Inner City Christian Federation. We're a 45-year-old faith-based nonprofit community development organization in Grand Rapids. I live at 436 Rosewood Avenue Southeast in Commissioner Salfeld's district here. I've been in the real estate business for 17 years. The first decade was spent in private real estate development. The last seven years have been in the affordable housing industry. We currently work with the Kent County Land Bank Authority on a variety of types of work through acquisitions and clean title. It's been a very useful tool for our type of work in community development. In fact, seven of the last eight single-family homes that have gone through our ADR, Acquisition, Development, and Resale Program, have been assisted in some way by the land bank authority. I was at the Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday and heard from several commissioners about mission creep away from blight elimination and toward affordable housing. First off, the lack of affordable housing is a real issue across Kent County, not just in the city of Grand Rapids. ICCF is also active in Wyoming, we're active in Kentwood, we're active in Lowell, and we're active in Cedar Springs. These are all communities, and I would argue across the entire county, that is faced with housing issues where low- and moderate-income families struggle each day with housing instability. This is a county-wide problem for sure. Secondly, just because this tool is being used to address affordable housing needs does not mean it isn't going toward blight elimination. I feel like that was something that was lost in the Tuesday discussion. That makes the beauty of this. We can address two large community needs with an organization that literally has no annual general fund financial obligation from the county. We have also heard from some commissioners and the administrator that the market has improved and the land bank is no longer needed, but we continue to see terribly blighted properties that are lost through the tax foreclosure process, and many of these have significant barriers toward redevelopment. I wonder how the county plans to handle those properties to ensure, all properties, I should say, the worst of the worst, to ensure a safe and appropriate redevelopment.
You're at two minutes.
Something, thank you, something that cannot be insured through the previous tax foreclosure auction process. I've personally walked through hundreds of homes, in single-family homes in this community, many of which were owned by private investors who participated in this quote "free and open bidding" process. In fact, over the last 14 months, ICCF has purchased over 200 homes from a private investment group that spent way too little on capital improvements and maintenance to ensure safe and successful housing for the family who lives there. Thankfully, we are working hard each day to correct that. Everyone in the Finance Committee heard loud and clear that there's members of the community that are not pleased with some of the current operation of the land bank. That point was clearly not lost on anyone, but I refuse to believe that it no longer has value, that in theory could easily be restored in the future if some fictitious time came when that was needed. I urge you to honor good process with earnest community engagement and to work with the Board of the Land Bank toward making any necessary improvements to keep this important tool and resource for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Steve Moss. My home address is 3510 Apache Court in Granville, Michigan. I'm a constituent of Stan Ponstein. I'm the Granville Mayor and just wanted to let you know about a very positive experience example that the city of Granville has had with the Kent County Land Bank. We had a very dilapidated, blighted structure in the city of Granville, which was given to the Kent County Land Bank. Kent County Land Bank worked with a private developer builder. Two single-family owner-occupied homes were put up, and it really changed the whole character of the neighborhood. Other homes in the area also began rehabilitation, and it's just been a very positive experience for the city of Granville. Thank you all for your service and have a great Christmas.
Thank you. Good morning, Ken.
Good morning. I'm Kent Parish Kent County Treasurer and Chair of the Kent County Land Bank Authority. First off, I want to apologize to the commissioner, staff, and anyone else who felt that the land bank was not communicating sufficiently or transparently. We certainly strive to do that. Those are two items that can always be done better, no matter how well you do them. But it's obvious to me, we didn't do it well enough. As for the legal DBA name and modular home initiatives, I assume that with Assistant Administrator Mary Swanson participating in the land bank's strategic planning process, the information would have made it back to the administrator's office and executive committee. As Chair of the Board, that's on me. I'm sorry. Speaking of the Board, any dissatisfaction you may have with the land bank should be directed at the Board, not staff. The staff took their direction from the Board and Advisory Council. Never went rogue or took on projects without Board approval. You just heard from many constituents and community organizations, also known as stakeholders, who will be adversely affected by the passage of the resolution before you today. Strong message from them is that they want to be involved and that your process is moving too quickly. At the Finance Committee Administrator Britt stated he would like to sit down with me to work things out. I would love to do that. But I've also heard comments suggesting that, "Oh, you could pass the resolution today, and then there's still time to negotiate." Don't renegotiate a contract by tearing it up without a replacement in hand. If you pass this resolution today, that will be a message heard far and wide that your position is to shut down the land bank. It will be a death knell.
You're at two minutes.
No entities or individuals will be interested in working with the land bank with such uncertainty. I'll have no choice but to proceed with liquidation, and there will be no negotiation. But if you defeat the motion or even postpone the vote for a couple of months, we can evaluate all the existing projects for length of completion and adverse impacts and discuss changes that can be made. You'll be making a much more informed decision. Obviously, you know which choice I hope you make. On a final note, on another note, really, I want to thank Commissioners Mast and Corndyke for their many years of service to the community. I hope our paths cross again soon. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Apol. I'm from Granville, Michigan, 3246 Waburn Southwest. I came on Tuesday, and I'm here on Thursday because I've been involved in the process of affordable housing for folks in Grand Rapids, in Kentwood, in Wyoming, and have spent a lifetime encouraging the folks that have the power to continue to reach down and provide affordable housing. I want to challenge you today to continue to do that and consider that working out this arrangement, this working on continuing this agency is, I think, a very important part of your responsibilities. I know that the private sector can, in their own way, do what they believe they can do, but I believe it's those of you in power that need to protect the folks that are continuing to look for affordable housing and to continue to work towards that American dream. And so my hope is that you will continue the Kent County Land Bank, and I think we are here as citizens to help continue this with you and work towards a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not seeing any other public comments, so we will proceed with Item 7 on our agenda, which is the Consent Agenda, and I will call, I guess, on Commissioner Talon. Is that right?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Interesting combination this morning.
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the Consent Agenda items, various committee and board minutes, and three resolutions.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Vice Chair Bolter. Questions or comments on the Consent Agenda? I guess Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask to remove Resolution 105.
Okay. That's the first resolution under C. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Yeah, just because the meeting's not going to be long enough. I'd like to remove 106 and 107, just so we can have conversation of what's really happening there. Thank you.
Okay. So all of C has been removed. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Is a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, removing Item 105, Commissioner Antor.
Yes. It's 105, 106, and 107.
I'm sorry, 105 through 107?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breeby.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vunk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18, or 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Consent Agenda is adopted.
All right. Then we will move to Resolution 105. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that.
By Commissioner Jones and supported by Vice Chair Bolter. Questions or comments on this item? Yes, Mr. Talon.
Thank you, Chair. I asked to have that removed because, in my mind, that's significant $400,000 of funding for unmet needs. Isn't really routine, and I want to express appreciation for the annual process that the DHHS Board goes through to help us understand what these needs are and what's the best way to address them. So, that said, I certainly will be supporting it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Morgan.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I would just like to state that this is pretty Kent County-specific, and it's really great to be in a position that we can appropriate money that is out of our general fund to help some of these folks out, and if you look around the state, I don't think it's done anywhere else. So this is significant and special to Kent County. I just want to point that out.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I see none of this is a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 122018105, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 122018105 is adopted.
Thank you. I think the next two we can take together, so I'll seek a resolution on Items 106 and 107, Resolutions 106 and 107.
Move approval.
By Commissioner Tallon, supported by Commissioner Bolkowski. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Well, both of these items also kind of tie bar to Resolution 112, which is the creation of the Strategic Capital CIP, and as Commissioner Tallon said about the previous item, 106 and 107 aren't routine. They seem to be pretty unique, at least in my six years at the Commission, that at the end of the fiscal year, we're creating some opportunities. So, I mean, my question is, and on Tuesday, I was kind of distracted after a long conversation about the land bank, so to ask the questions here of, again, to be clear, where this money's going and the process going forward to get to a purchase price, especially the Brewer Park property, looks like an unbillable lot, but of course, it has value and all of that, so take it away. Thank you, Matthew.
Let me speak briefly on that. We had a savings this year for healthcare because of good experiences, so we had a healthcare holiday. So we're proposing to take those funds from that to set aside money for two CIPs. One, to purchase a segment of land for Brewer Park, which would give us access and better access to secondary exit. That park is used extensively on weekends for soccer and disc golf, and so we, for years, had worked with that landowner to try to figure out if we could just do an easement or something as they wanted to develop homes. They came to us this year and said, "We really just want to do a straight sale." So we're in the process of getting an appraisal done to determine what the value is and things like that. We believe it's in that ballpark of the number we're giving you, but we don't have that verified. Similarly, with Two Rivers, there's a landowner who approached us for those 200 acres, or 20 acres, excuse me, there's a price that we think it is, and so we're asking to set aside money for that CIP from this healthcare holiday. What we'll do next is, if this is approved, issue appraisal, appraisers to go out and do appraisals, work with those landowners, show them what the prices are at the appraisals, and if there's an agreement, then we'll come back to you as a commission to finalize purchases or seek your permission to finalize purchases for those properties. But this gives us the access of the funds into the next year to be able to do that. Is that helpful?
It is. And real quick, then the follow-up, since this is labeled as a CIP project, is this comport with our CIP policy and procedure in the sense that these, the next two projects on that list, are because of the uniqueness of these, they moved forward?
I think it's the uniqueness of these two opportunities and how they came with the healthcare holiday coupled, and then by putting them in the CIP, we set this money aside that we can carry forward into the next year so that we can then make a decision as a Board, you can have that opportunity to purchase if the price is right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Matthew, just, I guess, two quick questions or comments. You know, in both of these, the resolution just simply states that acquiring this land is consistent with several objectives and forth, and the department's parks, trails, and natural areas master plan. I guess it would be nice to get a little bit more detail on this, about how this fits in, what this land might be used for in the future. Again, I remain skeptical that we're simply adding land so that we can reach a magical 200-acre number. You know, I look at Brewer Park, it reminds me of Manhattan Park in East Grand Rapids. Soccer fields, a playground, a pavilion, some ball fields. You know, we built that with city funds, but yet we see basically a township park being built with county funds. And I think we need to take a long look at what the purpose of the county park department is. If it's subsidizing parks and townships and giving them things and using East Grand Rapids and Grand Rapids taxpayer dollars to do it, that'd be interesting to hear. But I just have a difficult time seeing why we should use funds to add a second entrance to a park when we're not doing much for all of those areas that were on your map that are in my districts and other districts that make up, that make up Grand Rapids. That being said, we're also about to vote on spending some money on the river, which is in the city. So, in the sense of fairness, I'll support this, these resolutions, but I, again, encourage us, as Commissioner Vonck had mentioned, that we have a real rethink about what we're doing, how do we achieve park fairness, and how do we achieve a county park system that makes sense.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, Matt, when we look at spending money in Grand Rapids on the river project, Grand Rapids, we're looking at attracting people from the county, regionally, even statewide, to almost everything we build in Grand Rapids, whether it's our hotels, our parks, our entertainment venues. When we, when we look at these parks that we're acquiring with Brewer Park, what are some of the five-year and 10-year plans when it comes to programs and infrastructure that would attract people from the City of Grand Rapids and other parts of Kent County regional to make these investments worthwhile and pleasurable to all of the members of Kent County, the citizens and our constituents?
Just in terms of Brewer Park, I would...
Or the adjacent park, as you've mentioned.
Yeah. Soccer is a community game for many children in the City of Grand Rapids as well as outlying, and we know from the Sports Commission that there's a shortage of fields. So, you know, this is probably the, one of the best spots in the county to play soccer, frankly, and so on the weekends, we have an association that helps us manage the tournaments and the games there, and on the weekends, it's very, very busy. And so this access will help with safety and other things to support those children wherever they may come from. So that, I would just, Commissioner Womack, to you, in sports. In terms of Two Rivers, that's a very unique opportunity. It's at the confluence of two rivers where they come together, and we've purchased a significant amount of property there. The uniqueness of this property is its flatness, frankly, and for parking lots, and so it can be a regional park and bring in people from all over the county, just like people go to Millennium Park from all over the county. These regional parks are opportunities for people in the cities, the Core Six, where they may live, to go out and experience a rural, more tranquil environment, and that's one of the purposes of regional parks. So, you know, we only came to you for these because they're select and they're really intentional, and we had a way to fund them at this time. So I would just offer that, that, you know, these are for the whole community.
When we look at the soccer, that soccer, that's an existing program, but like, when we're talking about the future, would that park, Two Rivers, are they kind of locked into the soccer program, or is there any insight on other things we can do there along the rivers, or marketing and advertise to the greater area to make it worth all the taxpayers' money?
So, just to talk about communication, that's one thing we've been talking about with our parks and marketing and working on that, those types of things. So I think that will be in the future, and that we're aware of it, and we need to do a better job in how we do that and communicate those opportunities, but yeah.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm somewhat puzzled by the logic of the location of our county parks. I don't think we would have spent $15 million in the City of Grand Rapids for Millennium Park, so I think we're here to access parkland and make those parks available to county residents, and I never thought that location of a particular township or city had anything to do with it, so.
Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. As the Commissioner that represents this part of the county that we're talking about right now, I am grateful that the county's reaching out to purchase this property in the partnership with residents. I think it's very important to have this property available to citizens countywide, and the fact is that property's available, and in cities like East Grand Rapids, the City of Grand Rapids, there's not this amount of property available. So it's the type of thing where it's available, it's a good opportunity, and the county has funding for it and is working on additional funding. So it's important that we purchase this land as we can, and at Brewer Park, I'll drive by on a Saturday or Sunday, and soccer is filling the place, and it's so hard to get in and out of there. And one interesting fact that you may not know about this park is there's a cricket field. So on Sunday, when you drive by, you'll see people playing cricket, and it's quite amazing to watch. It's something I've never seen before. So that's one unique thing to Brewer Park, and it may, other parks in the county may not have that. So it's important that county residents know what's available and know that these parks are all accessible to them. Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Seeing it's your last meeting, I'm going to try my hardest to make it the longest one ever.
I think there's an effort underway, but go ahead.
I don't want to get into the fight between county and city. I mean, I sat on the City Council like Commissioner Skaggs, and we've got some great cities in this town. I represent Granville and the City of Wyoming. Their park system is unbelievable. I use them both. I've actually been in a park in East Grand Rapids. I don't know if there was a fee you wanted me to pay, I could. But it is, as a county commissioner, we still have to look at Kent County as a whole, and a lot of the benefits of the parks outside the city limits are improved, but, you know, a lot has been mentioned in public comment about communication. I think maybe it's time we reengage the cities and the counties and get people at least talking on what the benefits of the city are to the county and what's the outskirts benefits to the rest of the cities, and I think that's greatly, I don't want to say damaged, but not worked on. You know, we've had strains with the cities before. I don't want to revisit those chapters in the county commission of history, but we do. Our assets are the county, but within that county are some great cities that do a lot of great things.
Commissioner Womack.
Being one of the younger commissioners, I probably took my political science courses a little sooner, later than the others, but more recently than the others. Political Science 101, taxation without representation is really what this country was founded upon, and when we bring our taxes from all of our cities and counties and they're pooled as one, we definitely have to stick up for all our constituents, and even those beyond Kent County that come to this city for services. And that's some of the reasons why we do ask for a five-year, 10-year plan when we're purchasing properties. So I do also question the logic of some of the properties we buy and not being able to ask questions on what our five-year, 10-year... ...programs, infrastructure, when we buy these lands, if those residents in those townships develop something outside of soccer that they would like to see it, are we willing to put money behind it and also make sure that we're supported by these voters and taxpayers to put more money in there to keep these parks updated? So we definitely, as county commissioners, support our townships, our cities, all as one, under the county, and I think it's going to benefit those, even in the immediate area, that we do have some foresight on five-year, 10-year plans, because we are talking about some of the great things about our parks, and we do have some great things going on our parks. I even believe that Millennium Park can be even more developed, and somehow, we're going to have to put more money in there, thanks to Peter Sekia and a lot of philanthropists in the City of Grand Rapids that have raised money for us to keep Millennium Park growing like it is. But, just my constituents, they have a whole lot of programs they like to see in Millennium Park. They have a lot of infrastructure they like to see there. Some of the things they like to see there, I tell them, every program isn't for every park. So, but some of those programs they're looking for, I do believe in 2019, we should be researching what county parks could have some of those programs to help the youth. Thank you very much. But I do support it, and I do respect all of your work, Matt. Keep up the good work.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolutions 122018106 and 107, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolutions 122018106 and 107 are adopted.
Thank you. We will move then to Agenda Item Number Eight, which are resolutions. We have nine of those today, and for the first one, I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. It's really, I'm excited to move the 108th resolution of this date. It is to approve the Grand Rapids Whitewater Funding Pledge and Appropriation of Commitment and Funding Agreement from the Administrator's Office. It's the whitewater.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Bolkowski. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. The only thing I want to add to this is that the biggest question about this is what the final cost will be, and I know when the whitewater folks were here explaining this to us, that was one concern. I mean, we started this project at $21 million, and now we're in the excess of $40. I asked a simple question that maybe I need to be brought up to speed or gather more information, and we talk about communication a lot, but I communicated with the whitewater people that I'd like to meet with them, and that never happened. Had email exchanges, they either forgot that I wanted to meet or didn't respond to the emails. I think going forward, if you're going to be coming to the county and the Commissioner does have a question about finances, that may be a little due diligence on getting back with what those concerns were. I will be voting in support of it today, but I do, I have great concern without even a bucket of sand coming out of the Grand River, that we're already at $40 million. I could see that escalating very quickly.
Let's hear directly from the source. Do you want to respond to that question?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Commissioner, my name's Matt Chapman. I'm one of the project managers with Grand Rapids, and I'm here with Chris Muller, one of our founders, and we've got Janet Korn, a board member here as well. I appreciate that feedback, and I apologize if we were not able to reach out to you. I know that Richard Bishop, our CEO, and other board members have tried to reach out to many of the Commissioners. There was a lot of great questions, very similar to that, about what that cost would be. I would just like to emphasize that we are currently going through a very detailed cost estimating process, looking at what those costs would be, and trying to make sure that, you know, we come up with a design that's feasible, both from a permitting, environmental standpoint, but as well as a cost standpoint. So we would be happy to continue those conversations and look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I've had some reservations about this project as well, and most of it revolves around the costs. I've spoken with the DNR Fisheries Department and so on and so forth, trying to get, do my due diligence, and one of the things that came up was the cost of the lamprey eel barrier. that. That is a concern of mine, just 'cause I've seen what's happened with the Asian carp. The estimates on that have increased four times the original cost. It's up to over seven-hundred million dollars now to keep Asian carp out of Lake Michigan. We're trying to keep lamprey eels out. I know it's not gonna approach that, because we're not comparing, you know, this is apples and oranges. However, those costs continue to go up. And the economic development around this plan, I just have not been able to wrap my arms around. But, I appreciate Richard Bishop meeting with me and addressing some of those concerns, and I know there's been a lot of people in this room that have looked at this in great detail. And I'm hoping the economic development will come, and that's why I'm gonna be supporting it. But, I know our contribution is set, but the overall cost, I just hate to see our contribution get caught up in something that doesn't end up working because we didn't do our due diligence. I am confident that you guys, along with Richard, have, have looked at all the possibilities, so I will support it. And I'm just praying that we keep those eels out of Lake Michigan a little bit cheaper than what it's gonna cost to keep the Asian carp out. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I just would, like, your organization have really known that Commissioner Ponstein is a very prestigious, highly respectable commissioner by myself and this board, and he's somebody that if you do keep in contact, he's very well at keeping the rest of us informed. And, um, once he gets information, he makes sure we get it, and he continues to give it to us. Even when we get it and we're tired of hearing it from him, he will continue to push it out there. And, uh, I, I totally respect him for going the extra mile to continue to try to talk to your organization. I also will hope that you will be communicating that once this project starts, just how there's gonna be equity and inclusion when it comes to the employment of this great project, and making sure that, um, a lot of the residents and people in this community have an opportunity to be able to say to their children years from now, you know, I was a part of that project, just how you're gonna include this community and the residents of this county. Thank you.
Fisher Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a one-point-four-million-dollar commitment over three years, and I guess, are there any benchmarks to that? So, if we get into the second and third year and, and something goes paywire and we didn't, it doesn't meet the expectation, is there a mechanism for the county to address our contribution?
Within the contract terms, the payment dates are within the county's control. And we do have a, a chart of the project, and so we have it almost set up like a Gantt chart with partial progress payments.
A Gantt chart, nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hennessy?
Thank you. One of the taglines for this project has been "A River For All," and I, I appreciate that there are efforts here to include many different people and many different aspects of using the river. And that will include the fishermen. And so we, you know, we've started to talk. There's been a long talking process, which I appreciate. It's been a process. And, and I know that some of the concerns will continue to be addressed and will continue to be, everything will, you know, hopefully become a little better as the conversation continues. But we've taken it a long ways, and that is appreciated in our contribution in terms of the total cost is, is actually very minimal, but I, I think it's also very important. Thank you.
Commissioner Vonk?
Yes, thank you, Chair. In my sixty years in this area, and my parents loved parks, and we used them a lot. When I was a child, I've never seen anybody in the Grand River. None of my friends played in the Grand River. We didn't take our bikes down there. I lived off the Grand River when we were first married for thirty years, and my kids never played in the river extensively, never went swimming in the river. I've seen a few kayaks on the river. Years ago, they had the hydroplane races on the river, and then they had the raft race for a number of years. It was the last huge event on the river. So, we have PFAS coming out of the Rogue River, and we've got a whole lot of other issues about clean water concerning the river. And, uh, so I'm gonna be a no vote, but make it a yes vote next time. Thank you.
Commissioner Bulkowski?
Thank you, Chair. As a person who has kayaked in the Grand River from, from down in Ada, as well as on the other side of the border in Genesee, from an accessible kayak launch, I look forward to being in the, the river more, though I probably won't be in the whitewater part, because I am a coward. That being said, I, I simply, I, I said a lot at, at finance, and my passion and support of this project continues. I simply want to highlight what Commissioner Hennessy said. This project really has been about a river for all, and really wanna focus on the effort to engage the Anashinaabe community, not only with the wet part and the dry part as well. So, that, that is a critical part, and the return of the sturgeon, and, and really making that happen. So, so there are huge kudos for that and so much more, but I'll try to be quiet, at least at this moment.
Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna support this motion, because I think that this raises a, a great opportunity for the county as a whole. It is a unique opportunity, and frankly, the, the odds of this ever happening are kinda slim that we would even gotten this far. So, I think it's important that we reward that and go forward. I do, though, share some of the concerns about, well, what is the economic, financial stability of the structures for managing this going forward, and we'll continue to watch that carefully. Council's clarification was a little different than what I was anticipating. I thought the one-point-four is a commitment, not a reversible commitment, but are you suggesting that we can claw back components of that if we determine that there's inadequate performance?
Yes, that we are committing to the one-point-four, and that's what, what will be moved within the fiscal system into this project line. But if the, the first phase, for whatever reason, doesn't come to pass, or the second phase doesn't come to pass, we're not handing over that, if you will, the third check for a project that no longer exists.
So, will that require subsequent resolutions by this board to approve these installments, or is it gonna require action to withdraw the installments?
The way, the way the contract is drafted is that the timing is within the control of the county as delegated to the administrator and with the assistance of the fiscal director. It is not coming back to the board for each of the installments, no.
But if there's a decision to not release an installment because of lack of performance or whatever the assessment be, that's an administrator decision?
That's the way it's written right now, yes, sir.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I'm just excited about the opportunities that, working jointly with the John Ball Sioux on things along the river, that we have not really capitalized in many ways the, the resources and the assets that Grand River is. And I think with the efforts that have been made in the environmental upgrade of the river, I look forward to watching my grandkids, well, probably more of my great-grandkids, go whitewater rafting down Grand River. So, very excited about the project. Thank you.
Thank you. This, okay, we got one more. Chair Talan?
Thank you, Chair. I'm excited about the project also. I did have questions about the funding source and had asked Administrator Britt for some additional documentation on the projections that we're, we're basing the availability of this funding on. He had indicated that a pro forma would be provided, and I'm just asking whether I missed that or whether that's something that will be coming.
My, my error in not getting that to you, but I will and I shall. And it has been done, so we'll get that to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 122018108, Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioners Breavy?
Yes.
Bulkowski?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Vonk?
No.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Chair Salfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yeas, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 122018108 is adopted.
Thank you. We will next call on, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you very much, and look forward to returning to the rapids for the region, and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. We'll look forward to future updates, too, as the project is progressing. Thank you. Well, next, I will next call on Commissioner Mast regarding Resolution 109.
I move Resolution 109, which is the West Michigan Sports Commission appropriation of four-hundred thousand dollars.
Support by Commissioner Breavy. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. Looking back at the history of the Sports Commission, I think when we first started this endeavor and with the leadership of former Commissioner Vander Mullen, I guess one could look at it and not see where it is today. And I think back then, if we said that this is the scope, you're only gonna promote and bring sports into the county, I think we would have been mis-served. We've been greatly served by, by Mike, that he looked out of the box, looked at different things. Some things that people might have said, well, is that really the scope we wanted? But I think everything Mike and the Sports Commission, the staff he's put behind it, is enhancing the county, is making a difference. And I think, I would hope that in the future, that that's the type of committees that are out there that are doing work for the county, you know, embrace, is that we've gotta look out of the box, we gotta do difference. We love patting ourselves on the back, all the time saying we do do things different. I'm just happy to say that we do, and I appreciate your work on this, Mike, your long-term vision, and always looking for new and unique opportunities to bring to Kent County. And I appreciate the work, and I'm fully supportive of your organization and this request.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. I don't know that it's lost on too many people that were probably about to authorize four-hundred thousand dollars to, I think, pay off some loans to build softball fields. I certainly appreciate Commissioner Ponstein's praise for the Sports Commission for thinking outside the box. Wonder if we will be doing the same in Agenda Item 110. You know, I, I have mixed feelings about this. Here's from at least what I was able to find, that, and interestingly, this all happened in November 2009, which must have also been an exciting meeting, that there was no discussion about this future four-hundred thousand dollars payment, and that instead, the Sports Commission was supposed to be sort of self-funding by five years later, so 2014. That being said, I think they came in, they gave their report. They were fairly successful at making the argument that there's a strong return on investment. Again, I'll be making a similar comment later on, but I can support this. I just think it's important to note everything that we're doing today.
Fisher Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, it brings back memories. When we first started thinking about the Sports Commission, we went down to St. Louis and Indianapolis, and we made trips, and we just didn't want to compete and be a run-of-the-mill Sports Commission. We wanted to compete with some of the best Sports Commissions in the nation. And that was our goal then, and I think that's still our goal now. And I wanna congratulate Mike for his vision and what he's done with the Sports Commission. And I think it has returned what we initially thought it would do. It would increase the, the heads and beds and, and get traffic into West Michigan at the time of, right on the brink of the Great Recession. So, we made a million-dollar investment right during the downturn. And so, I just want to acknowledge the vision of the Sports Commission and what it continues to do, and I think it's lived up to the expectation.
Fisher Corndyke?
I just wanna give a quick shout-out to, to Waven and Matthew. Were heavily involved in bringing that Sports Commission here back in 2006, and, and Chair Morgan was running the Board of Commissioners back then. And what we thought would happen has more than exceeded our expectations. And also, thank you to former Board Chair Vander Mullen back there, who did a great job running the Sports Commission at its inception. And to you too, Mike. Thank you for all your work, and look forward to this being another piece of bringing more sports to Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy?
I appreciate the, what the Sports Commission does. I have some caveats on this whole thing. We did approve a million dollars to get this started. It has been a source of continuing support from Kent County through the, get the name right, the Lodging and Excise Tax Fund. And, and as if that wasn't enough, you're now coming back to us for four-hundred thousand dollars extra in a year. And I have, you know, I have some reservations on that. You know, you have, it has become a continuing stream of funding support for us. And it's not that you don't do good. You do. But, but we look at other things that, you know, sometimes become self-sufficient, and this is not, and it will not be in the, in the near future.
Well, and to comment on that, and thank you, Commissioners, for, for all your comments, and certainly appreciate the continued support. To reiterate, Dick Vander Mullen, who's our immediate past chair and, of course, a former county commissioner, we've got several of our board members in the room today, both in support of this resolution, but also to show appreciation for what the county has meant in creating this organization, but what, what it continues to mean in supporting it. We are all about economic activity and spurring economic growth through visitor spending. And so, certainly, the lodging excise tax, both in receipts, benefits from that, and your continued funding helps us go out and continue to grow that fund. So, the return on investment, I believe, is, is proven and is there. And it's something that certainly as commissioners, and we heard it today, you, you have challenging things to, to make strong decisions on, in health and human services and so many other items. But, you know, I, I think looking towards our future, and you certainly have done that, in building our infrastructure and our growth, and what's gonna contribute to our growth, you certainly have done that in the West Michigan Sports Commission. We're fortunate to have the partnership that we do with Experience Grand Rapids as well, that brands this destination and, and helps grow that, that tourism. And Commissioner Morgan made a, a great comment with regard to the Great Recession that we were in when we were formed. And it's been proven that sports tourism holds strong in down economies, because as parents, we want our kids involved in sports. And so, that's really what we've been able to contribute. In 2010, we started a capital campaign to build the Art Van Sports Complex, and we're able to do that because of a strong board leadership and looking outside the box in how we can grow this. We worked in collaboration with the county to purchase some land at a discount at four-hundred thousand dollars. And then we did the campaign on a private side to raise nearly seven million dollars to build this asset, which continues to bring dollars into our community. So, certainly, I think on that return investment, that's there. Now, we carry a note currently that there are some pledges that will help pay that down. There is a little bit of a gap, but, you know, these dollars in this resolution will help pay down that debt, reduce the interest payments that we're carrying in the operations of the complex, and help us invest more dollars into that complex, so these visitors continue to wanna come back and enjoy what we have to offer. So, we couldn't do that without your initial support, without your continued support. I thank you for your vote today, and again, reiterating, happy holidays and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote. I'm sorry, did I see a hand? Oh, go ahead. Commissioner Antor?
As a former member of the Sports Commission, I just wanted to thank you. You, you've been a tremendous ambassador for this, and, you know, between you and Doug Small with Experience Grand Rapids, it's a great coalition. It's a great one-two punch. And the things that you talk about thinking outside the box, we have this beautiful Art Van Sports Complex built on an old landfill. You know, that's unbelievable, how we were able to take a piece of property that had virtually no value and turn it into a beautiful complex like you have. So, I just wanted to thank you for all your work and continued work. I know you're, you're busy, you're continually looking, you haven't got stale, you're not, you know, getting complacent, and I appreciate all your work.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 122018109, Commissioner Antor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioners Breavy?
Yes.
Bulkowski?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Corndyke?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Steck?
Yes.
Talan?
and which you, well, and all that you're working on up there.
Thank you, thank you Commissioners, for your great leadership and work for our county.
Thank you. We will move to item, third resolution, Item C, and I will call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to move Item 110 of today's date, the motion to dissolve the land bank authority from the Administrator's office.
And is there support?
Mark.
By Commissioner Coleman. And we'll begin today, I saw Commissioner Tallon's hand up. Okay. Read one.
No.
Okay. Commissioner Tallon, go ahead.
Thank you Chair. I've heard a lot of concerns shared by leaders in our community, and by some of my colleagues, both today and on Tuesday, about the process that's brought us to the resolution that we're considering this morning. I share those current concerns, but won't belabor the point, as I think it's been made eloquently and repeatedly. I'll simply summarize by saying that I see no compelling need to take this action today, and to do so flies in the face of what I've understood to be our standard procedure of not considering a significant resolution at the full Board only two days after deliberation at a standing committee, unless there's an urgent need. I've heard no urgent need expressed for considering this, at least I haven't heard that publicly. I want to focus my comments on the notion that I've heard from my colleagues and others who've spoken in favor of shutting down the land bank, that the land bank is no longer needed. At Tuesday's Finance Committee meeting, many of us heard testimony about specific housing projects that are in the works or been recently completed, and have been significantly assisted by collaboration with our land bank. We heard from Dwelling Place, the Inter-City Christian Federation, Linkup, New Development Corporation. Between them, they have hundreds of years of experience in developing housing for people who haven't been served well by the mainstream market. We heard from the owner of a significant company in the property title market, who talked about the importance of the land bank for clearing up titles on difficult properties to get them back on the market. We heard from private sector developers, who cited collaboration with the land bank as critical to the success of their projects. We heard Ken Parrish on Tuesday and today talk about other successful collaborations involving the land bank, all around the county, that strengthened the remediation of brownfields and lead abatement efforts. Speaking of lead, we heard this morning, and received a communication yesterday from Paul Han, who I consider a lead guru in our community, and we heard from him citing the importance of the land bank as a partner in addressing lead poisoning crises that we, as a county, are deeply involved in. We heard from Grand Rapids Mayor Rosalynn Bliss, who cited the significance of the city's collaboration with the land bank in addressing the severe housing affordability issues that are being experienced by Grand Rapids residents. We like to talk about what a collaborative organization Kent County is. We value collaboration so much that we put out an annual report that lists all the ways we work with other local and regional partners. Our 2017 report, which we can see on the website, our report on collaborative efforts, lists this example. Sparta Foundry, a multi-jurisdictional collaboration between the Village of Sparta, the Kent County Land Bank Authority, the Wright Place, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, to acquire, through the tax foreclosure process, an obsolete, abandoned foundry, remediate the environmental issues, and resell it for productive use. That was just last year's report. I struggle to understand how we can talk about being a collaborative organization with a straight face, and then shut down on short notice, and in the face of so much testimony from longtime leaders in our community. Shut down an organization that's collaborated with so many to help make housing more affordable for so many in our community, and has done so within the context of their mission. One of the, one of the things cited in the handful of communications that we received from people who want to see the land bank shut down, and that's also pointed to in the staff report on the land bank, is mission creep. Did a little research on that term and learned that it originally applied to military operations, but more recently is being applied to other fields. And here's something I read about its application in the not-for-profit world. I'm quoting, "Mission creep is when your nonprofit organization expands its mission beyond the original goals that were set. There's a difference between mission creep and making strategic adaptations to a mission statement to evolve as needs change around us. The difference is that strategic adaptations should be weighed organization-wide and involve a critical thinking process before implementation. Mission creep usually occurs as a rash decision or during a crisis situation." I don't know how many of my colleagues have ever attended a land bank board meeting, other than our colleague Stan, who's on the board. We receive meeting notices every month, and for some reason, out of curiosity, I guess, I decided to show up to observe their meeting back in June. It happened to be the meeting in which Executive Director David Allen presented the results of a strategic planning process, and asked the Board to approve a new and innovative approach to meeting the organization's mission of getting tax-foreclosed properties back into productive use. I watched the Board discuss the plan. I saw them being very intentional about its adoption and implementation. I don't see how that strategic plan focused on new ways to accomplish the mission is mission creep. I think it is intentional, creative thinking, and I wish we had more of it at the county. My colleagues who've served with me for a while have heard me lament on multiple occasions the lack of incentive in our organization to be creative and to think out of the box. Believe me, when we approve this resolution this morning, our employees are going to take note that creative thinking is not always highly valued at Kent County. I'm also concerned and embarrassed at how Kent County looks to the community that we serve. We're currently engaging in our first-ever strategic planning process that involves significant input from our community. I attended the meeting in Kentwood, and have talked to people who attended other sessions. Affordable housing was a significant concern at the session I attended, and I've heard that it was at others. Are we really going to shut down what we have heard clearly stated by community leaders is a significant tool for addressing affordable housing? That's simply beyond my comprehension. I want to close my comments by addressing the concept that was brought up by one of our colleagues on Tuesday, that I've seen reiterated in other communications, and heard again several times this morning. Apparently, there are some in our community who think that, and I quote, "Our housing market is doing fine." I'm here to tell you that where I live, and in the district that I represent, that covers parts of all three wards of the City of Grand Rapids, and in Sparta, and in Lowell, the housing market is not doing fine. It may be doing fine for market-rate housing developers, it may be doing fine for maybe half the people in Kent County, and I think that might be a stretch, but for most people, the housing market is more difficult than ever. It's more difficult than ever to find a place to live in Kent County that's affordable. For the last five years, I've witnessed this in my work with the Coalition on Homelessness. Do any of my colleagues see the irony, enforcing the shutdown of an organization that leaders in our community have said offers important tools for addressing our shortage of affordable housing, while at the same time, our community is trying to raise a million dollars to provide temporary shelter in the former Holland home for hundreds of families who are experiencing homelessness? These families are our neighbors, members of our churches, kids who go to schools with our kids, they struggle to find housing they can afford. Please help me understand how it makes sense to eliminate a resource that we've heard plays such a significant role in helping so many families, and please help our community understand how it makes sense for us to do this.
Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you Chair. I really wish I could filibuster this action item. And Commissioner Morgan just got really nervous. Because he knows I could talk for two or three days without stop.
There's actually a rule that gives you five minutes.
And there you go. Thank you Chair for pointing out that our rules do not allow that. This body has rules, many of them written, many of them unwritten. And the most important rule we have, as I quoted to my friends from Movimiento Consecha, this is a deliberate body, and to demand that we make decisions with no notice and no deliberation is not what we do. And my friends, these are my friends at Movimiento Consecha, they don't like me for that decision, because I'm choosing to be deliberate. And at this moment, my friends at CAR, and my friends in the, a few friends in the commercial real estate industry and the residential industry, they don't like me, because I equally, I'm going to ask, when we're all done talking, before the motion, to postpone this again. We are a deliberate body. This is way, way, way too fast. How does this procedure not fly in the face of everything that we have done? And right now, I don't know if I can invite the Treasurer and David Allen to the podium, because I have questions about the substance of the issue, but I want to focus on this. The last two Agenda items, we had people from the Whitewater and the people from the Sports Commission come and talk to us. Can we, I don't know, I'll leave it to the Chair to see if we can invite them up. Some people say, Dave, why delay it? Because the votes are going to be the same now, and they're going to be the same on February 14th. My motion on Tuesday was to postpone to Finance on February 5, because the next two weeks we're going to be distracted, and February 5 would be Finance, Full Commission February 14th. Dave, why? Why postpone it? The votes are going to be the same. Guess what? Did anybody read the budget that was given to us in August? And we had many work sessions, we had many Finance Committee meetings on that budget, and not one penny changed. In a $350 million budget, not one penny changed, after all that deliberation. I look forward to next year having a lot more free time, because we don't need work sessions on the budget, because nothing's going to change, Dave. Why go through the motions? I've talked to plenty of stakeholders in our community on this, not only Mayor Bliss, also Manager Wine Garden in Plainfield Township. There is a continued critical need of the land bank. Have we asked the question, will the state land bank have the same level of customer service that we currently get from the land bank? Right now, I don't know. That's why we need time to ask those questions. To say that this is an affront to the free market, I just, that, that to me is... Our friends from Switch came here and got a nice big tax break from us, so they would locate out in Gaines Township. I'm sure our friends at Amazon got a little preferential tax treatment to put some jobs, again, out of the reach of people who are transit-dependent out in Gaines Township. We pick winners and losers all the time, we can say we don't like doing it, we do it. Let's, we do it deliberatively. We do it deliberatively, let's keep our deliberation happening. But being an affront to the, to the, to the free market, I have a favorite lawsuit. And if you don't have a favorite lawsuit, I really recommend you get one, because it's just good to have. And I'm not talking about Marbury versus Madison, or Plessy versus Ferguson. My favorite lawsuit was when the owners of Woodland Mall sued the developers of Rivertown Crossing Mall for their lack of environmental compliance. Mr. Taubman cared about the environment in Granville, wasn't that cool? Mr. Taubman wanted to delay the opening of Rivertown Crossings Mall by two months so he could have another Christmas holiday shopping season by himself. But that was fine, it was totally legal, it wasn't a frivolous lawsuit. He lost the lawsuit, Rivertown opened in November, and they made cash in that holiday season. My favorite lawsuit. I love irony. That's irony. The free market is not free. It costs a lot to get into it and a lot to play. The idea of the auction, the land bank has not purchased a property in the auction since at least 2013. We voted in 2013 to prevent, after much deliberation, we voted to prevent the land bank from purchasing a piece of property from the auction. The property that goes to the land bank today is purchased first by the municipality, which many of us spent a year deliberating, from May of '16 to May of '17, to go through the very, very painstaking process to understand that the state of Michigan has first right to purchase a property in that auction, and the municipality has the second right. And the City of Grand Rapids, Plainfield Township, and others exercised that right, and then, which is well within their right, they sell it to the land bank. So to say the land bank has been cherry-picking, that ended long ago, long ago. It does not exist today. And at this time again, there are so many questions I have about what are the unintended consequences of this? What's the liability that we face as a county, county, that if we stop this? If a deal goes bad, can Dwelling Place sue us? Can the for-profit developers that are in partnership with the land bank? Because that's the other myth. All of the nonprofit developers that talked today have many, 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 many private sector partners. They all are in partnership with the private sector, collaborating. So what happens? Who gets the property or not? Questions. Does it revert to Kent County? Does it revert back to the City of Grand Rapids, because the land bank owns it? What's happening to these agreements? These are some significant questions. Again, I don't know if we can invite the Treasurer up to ask these at this time. Who can really create a land bank? Can a city? Can a city less than, that has a school district less than $100,000? I don't know. Can a township create one? Because Plainfield Township really liked the work it got, the customer service from the land bank. So what's really happening? Where do we go? And then, of course, I'm simply going to say, the number-one charge against the land bank was its lack of transparency. I find this lack of deliberation a lack of transparency. Where is the list of stakeholders? There was a list of stakeholders, people who were in all of our meetings, all kinds of minutes. Who are the actual people who said what against it? Who really wants the land bank to go away? So to me, this isn't about deliberation, this is about power, authority, and punishment. We're going to punish some people whose actions we don't like, which is well within our right, and that's what I believe a majority of us will be doing shortly.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you Chair. Two hours into the meeting, I'm sure you all want to hear me pontificate about my thoughts on good government, but, you know, in my day job in the business world, we move fast, and we experiment, and sometimes we break stuff, spend money we shouldn't, you know, et cetera. And that's not how government should work. Government should be slow and deliberative, and to ensure, you know, good stability and everything. And having been part of the Subcommittee on the Land Bank, started, you know, almost two years ago, we've had a two-year process. I know that I've spent dozens of my own hours understanding the land bank, understanding the state law, the complexities there, all of that. We had a detailed report out of that Subcommittee that came to this Board many months ago. We received that report. We've since had updates from the land bank authority and the Treasurer to this body. To me, that seems to be a good, slow, and deliberative process, and so I'll be supporting this resolution today.
Commissioner Skag, I'm sorry, Melton.
Thank you Chair. As a Commissioner and representative of my community, I am only as strong as my word. In last year, 2017, I voted along with this Board to give the land bank until 2020 to better align themselves with the guidelines that have been provided for them. Until I got my Board packet for the Finance Committee meeting, I had received no information allowing me to have more than four or five days to decide whether or not this is an entity that should be dissolved. I've asked for financial information. I actually was told, well, there's not time to get that to you. If there's not time for me to get that kind of information, how then can there be time for me to make a decision that is involving places like the Dwelling Place, Wright Place, Linkup, ICCF, all stating how helpful the land bank has been for them to allow affordable I represent Kentwood and I am so, so proud of my community beyond what you could imagine. We are the most diverse, community diverse school system in the state of Michigan and we are seventh in the United States. I take tremendous joy and pride in that. We have a huge, large percentage of homeless persons. We have kids that come to our school, even our middle schools, who don't go home to a home. You better believe that when I hear that nonprofit organizations are working hard to find affordable housing for persons in my community and in our county, I'm listening to them. And for me to make a decision today in such a short time when we have had the plea of our community members, please let us be part of this decision-making process. Please let us tell you more about what we're doing. If we want to think outside the box and we're so excited that our sports people think outside the box, I think we better think outside the box for our lower income persons who don't have the same voice that we do. I will definitely not be supporting ending the land bank at this time. I don't know enough about it.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair, so Phil. I'm not going to reiterate everything that the three people have already said. Hopefully in the time that I've been on the land bank and I've been the representative since day one and those responsibilities started long before the land bank actually was created and developing it. A lot's been said, I just want to clarify a few little things right off the bat. I wanted to add to Mayor Granville's comments about the project that was two blocks from me. I had nothing to do with choosing that one, the city of Granville did. That was a mortgage foreclosure. This was a house that was, I want to say crime ridden, it was getting ordinance violations, the police were called there a lot. The land bank, when that was approached to us to do something with it, thought, well, maybe we can rehab it. And just the level of disarray of that house, we went another route. And that route became available, wasn't available to the private sector developers. It was one of the many programs that are available through the state that can only be worked through the land bank. And that fund was the hardest hit funds. And when everyone thought about the hardest hit funds, you know, immediately think of Detroit and Flint wrongfully. Those funds were used in Kent County on numerous houses. And when we tore that house down, that was a windfall to the developer. I didn't hear anyone asking the developer that that was taxpayer money from the state of Michigan and you should reimburse the taxpayer. That was a program from the state that the land bank utilized. Sitting on that property now are two brand new homes that were sold at the time when they were built for $130,000. Recently, one of them sold again at the price of, I think around $190,000. That was not just an investment in the city of Granville that was made possible by the state of Michigan and the land bank. But that has a drastic effect on the neighborhood. Now granted, that's two blocks from me, but you can apply those same standards anywhere in the city of Grand Rapids where whether it's new development and partnership with the, with the land bank, when they make changes to the house, improve it, it starts to improve the whole block. And you can see that in any commercial development. You can apply it to the Whitewater. When you make an investment in something, it's all around. Now, without getting into the individual points that are said, I think it was spoken very eloquently. But as a board member, I want to echo what Ken Parrish said. And for some reason that we are now being held up because we don't communicate the mission of the land bank to the county or to the board, I'm guilty. I guess I'm the bad one. I've, I've been your representative the whole time. I hope that through the years that I have, the updates I've given, I've always added that if you ever had a question, give me a call. We did that with the, with the strategic plan. We had someone from the county staff sitting on that strategic plan, which now drives the Kent County Land Bank. We did not hear one comment from the administration of anything within that strategic plan was bad or they wanted change. I told all of you that that strategic plan was available to look at. If you had any questions, comment, call me. I got not a single call from any of you. And the other times when I've asked for comments, I appreciate, I get calls from Commissioner Tallin and Commissioner Hennessy, they're not always, you know, go get them Stan, but they have concerns about some things that the land bank's been doing. And I've always brought that forward to, to the land bank on different ways we can do it. Because at the end of the day, I mean, the partners that came up in support of the land bank, I mean, I want to apologize to them because maybe I've been taking you for granted, but it was just overwhelmingly to see the amount of support that we have in all sectors of this county to try to make the county better. And I've sat down with the commercial real estate people, I've had coffee with the executive director. Yeah, there are certain things we disagree on. Commissioner Kowski said it best, that tax auction, we don't take properties from that. This county commission took that right away from us and I supported that 100%. But for some reason now to say that that tax auction is a great example of the free market, it's not. In order to participate in that, first you got to have the day off from work. Second of all, you can't see the property you want to buy. And third of all, you need cash that day. That pretty much eliminates 90% of the people that want to be involved in that process. So if that's a process of, and something we hold up as the free market, I might not be a free market conservative anymore if that's the example leading. The other thing, I was here at the Finance Meeting and we talk a lot about communication. I think the way Treasurer Parrish was treated was pretty poorly. I know in the Legislative Committee, when we have something before us and we have questions, we give the person time to come up, answer questions and even talk back of things that might have been said that just weren't true. And that's unfair to him. And then to limit him to three minutes, and I've never seen anything like that in my 39 years of public service, where someone who is responsible for something in the county is a countywide elected official to be treated that way. I think that was very poorly and I want to apologize for Ken because I just sat back there and I could have easily just stood up. Now, I talk a lot about doing things different. And yes, people who are forward thinking, want to do things different and probably the, the worst quality of, of our executive director is that he wants results right away. And a lot of times that can turn a lot of people off. If this world was full of Dave Allens, I don't know if I'd like that. I don't think people would like it if the world was full of Stan Ponsteins. But I think somewhere along the line, we have a Kent County Land Bank that Dave reports to. And Dave has done a lot of things, not just dealing with the process of, of the land bank. But if you look at our staff and some of them are here this morning, you look at that staff makeup, we don't just walk the walk on issues. I mean, talk it, you know, we walk it. We've got one of the most diverse staffs of any committee authority in this county. We have a majority of minority workers that work for the land bank. And that's yielded positive results when we're out in the committee trying to spread our mission. Also, there's a lot, you know, to say, say about blight and that's what the state set up with the, when they set up the land bank track. I would just recommend to everyone that go to the state of Michigan and just type in Michigan State Land Bank Track and the opening paragraphs on why this bill was there. I, I read it again this morning, which I have done several times, I don't see the word blight in there. I see things like economic development and that's what this is about. And you look at places like the Wright Place, they don't just represent Kent County, they're all over the state. And that's a good thing. And I'm glad we've got leaders out there promoting Kent County and working with others to make it better. One of the biggest issues, which I don't, I, I just want to take time to clarify this is this word mission creep. And the other thing is that, you know, we're, we're mission creeping just like the Detroit land bank. I've always said that we are nothing like the Detroit land bank or the Cleveland or the New Orleans and all the land banks out there that have their own real estate division, have their own development divisions. If this was mission creep, when it comes to these modular homes, if we went to Byron Township, bought up a productive farmland, plowed it under, built roads, built sewers, listed the lots, sold them and made a profit, yeah, that would be mission creep. But that's not what we did. The modular home parcel or, or segment of our, our mission statement came about because we're a strong partner with the city of Grand Rapids. And I appreciate that partnership. They've taught me a lot about local government, you know, the problems facing housing. They have someone at our land bank every single meeting that if there's ever a question or they want more information or how we can be a better partner. The city of Grand Rapids were sitting on some vacant lots and they wanted to dispose of them with a focus on affordable housing. That's the right of the city of Grand Rapids to pull those off the tax auction. And I know the realtors may disagree that that's somehow wrong. I think if you ask anyone at the city of Grand Rapids how the tax auction has worked and how many properties kept reverting back, they wanted a more permanent solution. So when we looked at that, we were approached by Champion Homes and others on can we do something to get these vacant lots back into viable production and on the tax rolls? And we did, we partnered with Champion Homes. Now, if that's an overstep, that's my fault as a board member, but I didn't see it that way. I saw it as a solution and working with a partner, the city of Grand Rapids. And I was thankful for that. Now, because of our successes, we quickly got the eye of the governor of the state of Michigan, Rick Snyder. When he heard about what we were doing, he had said, this is needed all across the state of Michigan. Says time and time again, when a company comes to the state of Michigan, their biggest thing is that we build it and we're paying them, but they can't afford to live around the plant, can't afford to come work for us, can't move there. We need solutions. And that's how this so-called mission creep decided. We are not working in Muskegon County. All we are is a little conduit between Champion Homes in order to help a developer in Muskegon put in affordable housing at a quick, reasonable rate. And I tell you, when you see that project in the end, that's going to be something not only Muskegon will be proud of, but the whole state of Michigan. But that's what we're doing. We're not involved outside the county, we're helping others. And I, I would hope that we're not changing that, that somehow Kent County is so in their box, patting themselves on the back that we can't take our best practices and move them outside our county borders? I mean, we're constantly gauging ourselves against Oakland County and their best practices. I hope that we embrace looking outside the box, helping not just this county, but all 83 counties to make this the great state it was. And I've already probably talked over my five minutes and I apologize, but I just want to read one thing that I read yesterday, that kind of I think made full circus of what I want this county to look like and the type of county we need to be. And this is off of social media, so everyone's going to, they say this is fake news, but came from a post from our former Chair of the County Commissioner, Steve Heacock. And he was referencing an article that was in the New York Times and, yes, I read the New York Times and some may, may disagree with their viewpoints, but the article for itself hit the point. And the author stated, when he was talking about what's happening in Europe, he made this statement, he said, "I think the countries that will thrive in this era are the ones that have the most nimble cities." And I heard the word nimble a lot when we talked about the airport and that's why we needed to spin it off. "With the most nimble local leaders who build adaptive coalitions of businesses, educators and social entrepreneurs who can compete locally, regionally, nationally and globally." And then Steve had this remark to that. And Steve says, "I believe that in the Grand Rapids area, they have succeeded in part because it has traditionally been nimble with nimble leaders who build adaptive conditions." The trip will be is to continue forward. And I don't think I can say it any better than Steve did. Thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you Chair. Well, I think I'm going to read off notes. So here we go. When I, when I was elected two years ago or so, but before being seated, I had a county commissioner come to me and said, "Phil, if you want to understand the county, you got to understand that you should put your trust in the committees and the committee process." Today, I want to put our trust in the committees and the committee process. We had this report, which came out 17 months ago. Its recommendation was, we've got these recommendations. We plan to meet back, and I was at the meeting. We plan to meet back in five years and I think someone suggested three years and okay, we'll do three years. So I was a little shocked that, that we're even here today. Because as, as Commissioner Coleman said, they spent a year on this. Why aren't we paying any attention to this? This report clearly stated that there was still a need for the land bank. And yet, here we are back again, doing a report solely with staff that comes to a different conclusion in a handful of days than the elected officials came to in a year. So I think it's important that we understand this process because it has been deeply disturbing and unimpressive. At Friday, last Friday, like five and a half days ago, at 9:56 a.m., we got an email with the agenda. For many people, it was too big to open. And I started getting texts, "Have you read the agenda?" No, I can't open it. At 2:11, we got the final report. This report that we're talking about, this eight-page report, we've had in our possession again, five and a half days. Tuesday, at the Finance Committee, the resolution that we're voting on today was handed out at 8:29 for a committee meeting that started at 8:30. Boy, we like to make fun of Lanson and the way they do things and that we have a Kent County way of doing things. I don't know that we're living up to our, our goals. The report itself, not much to it. They talk about shareholder input, but again and again, I've heard, who were these shareholders that were, that gave their input? At the FAQ that we got yesterday at 4:29 p.m. from the administrator, 4:29 p.m., we got an FAQ that said, hey, who were these shareholders? And again, no names mentioned. So we don't know who's recommending any of these criticisms. We certainly have heard from many board members that they were not consulted. Lastly, when you look at the recommendations, I'll come back to them. You know, we've got like recommendation two on mission creep, the last sentence, revenue from 550 funds are seemingly co-mingled with fees to conduct this work in other counties. Seemingly? We're writing a report and we don't know the answer to things? I think this indicates that we ought to slow down. Other reasons we ought to slow down are, as Commissioner Tallin mentioned, relations with other units of government I think are at stake here and relations with the nonprofit community are at stake here. We've heard from the mayor of Grand Rapids, we've heard from the mayor of Granville, many of us have heard from the supervisor of Plainfield. We've heard from extremely important nonprofits who the county has, has partnered with in the past, like the Grand Rapids Community Foundation. I don't know why, again, we don't postpone the vote in order to make sure that we are not alienating the partners that we want to have in the future. So a couple of criticisms that I've heard, but before I get to that, I've heard this idea that, don't worry, we'll get rid of the land bank, but the city- idea that, "Don't worry, we'll get rid of the land bank, but the city can do the land bank." So I looked up the law last night, because, you know, this is all happening very quickly. And we are not a qualified city to open up our own land bank. Only Detroit is. We can partner with the state land bank, but again, in the report, it says, "Oh, there are certain things that a partnership with the state land bank can't do." I wonder what those are? Not in the reports. Criticisms. The recommendations have not been fulfilled. Well, I looked at the recommendations report, and it looks like most of these recommendations have been fulfilled ahead of schedule, right? They were asked to fulfill these recommendations, will come back in 2020. So I get recommendation implemented with one significant variation. Lead remediation, having a positive impact. Continue public-private partnerships, doing that. Have a strategic plan, did it. Legislative priorities, whoops, that was supposed to be something we do, we didn't do it. Future review, well, here we are, even though we're not supposed to be here until 2020. Another criticism is mission creep, which others have mentioned. I'll just add that, as Commissioner Ponstein mentioned, I went and looked at the bylaws, I looked at the agreement, I looked at the laws, and nowhere in there does it mention blight. What it mentions is using the tools that the land bank has for real estate and economic development. This is what we're doing now. The mission creep is different because the economics, or the mission is different because of different economic circumstances, but it's certainly defensible and arguable that they are well within the law. Success, another criticism, successful, and it's no longer needed. Again, not the conclusion of the year-long report. And the year-long report came out in May of 2017. Where's the difference in the real estate market between May of 2017 and December of 2018? There isn't one. Taxes. The gentleman from Byron Center said that this was not financially viable. The problem is, is that he neglected to leave out the words before that, which said, "Some argue." This was not a finding of the report, that the land bank is a loss leader. We've talked about return on investment for many programs. This program clearly has a return on investment, and the return on investment that it has, I think, is much more provable than the return on investment of the West Michigan Sports Commission, which was just relying on a ratio of a national association. Here, we have an independent review by Michigan State University. So in closing, the solution is before us. It's on page eight of the staff report, almost hidden in plain sight. We can table this motion, postpone it, go back, engage with our other units of government, with associations of realtors, with the nonprofits that work in this field, and we can come back and open up a new intergovernmental agreement. We don't have to kill the land bank today. The treasurer has now come before us and said that he wants to open up negotiations for a new agreement. Let's open up negotiations for a new agreement. If you wanted to send a message, I'm pretty sure the message has been sent. Let's have an agreement, let's look back, we still have too many questions, let's pause, consult, learn, and then we can decide at a later date. Thank you.
No government ever voluntarily reduces itself in size. Government programs, once launched, never disappear. Actually, a government bureau is the nearest thing to eternal life we'll ever see on this earth. A quote by Ronald Reagan, and something that applies very much today. Kent County Land Bank was set up by this commission to address blight and potential blight, and yes, let me repeat that, to address blight. At a time when the real estate market was in terrible shape, we were receiving information from Detroit and Flint about blight, and yes, maybe the statute doesn't specifically say it, but go read the legislative history for the statute, because I did, and it talks a lot about blight. And that is why this commission in 2011 set up the land bank. And we said at the same time, and there were discussions, very much along this issue, is this going to last forever? And we said, "No, we don't want this to last forever. We want this to do its job, and if circumstances change, and we come back to a time in history where we don't have this problem like we potentially have it now." Oh, I'll say, we were being very proactive, because we were far better off than Flint and Detroit was at that time. But we all thought it was a good idea, and we even put in there, "Let's review this going forward, and make sure we need this land bank going forward." And today, we all know where the situation is with blighted properties and tax-foreclosed properties in Kent County. If you're not sure, let me quote David Allen, who gave an article interview to MBiz in July of just this year, and said, "In many ways, Allen acknowledged that the pivot to development was one of necessity for nonprofit. As a state-licensed land bank, the organization largely serves as a clearinghouse for tax-foreclosed properties. As the economic expansion continues locally, however, foreclosed properties have been in short supply in Kent County," Allen said. So those out there that have said, "Oh, you don't want to throw away a failed entity," that's true. The reality is, the land bank succeeded. It did exactly what we wanted it to do. It saved off areas of the city and other areas of this county that had the risk of having blight, and it's done its job. And it was a job well done. Congratulations to Ken and David and all those that worked on it. But you know what? I'm going to stay true to that commitment I made, and I supported the land bank strongly in 2011. I'm going to stay true to that commitment that I made at that time, and everybody that was on this board, sitting here, made at that time, to go back and review this and decide at which point in time it needs to come to an end. And that is now. As I already mentioned, the real estate market has changed dramatically over this period of time, and in 2012 was our peak in tax-foreclosed properties. The goals of affordable housing, community gardens, lead abatement, those are great goals, admirable goals, things that I said we should be working on in this county as it relates to lead, which I formed the task force to address, and on the issue of low-income housing, it's an issue that we do need to address. I said that a year ago in my report that I gave to this board, that it's something we need to work on. But the land bank was not created to do those things. I'm sorry, I know that upsets people, but it was not created to do that. It was created to address blight in this county, and that is what that organization did. They did it well, and it's time to move on. Concerns about the land bank started in approximately 2015, when things were getting better in the real estate market. We formed a subcommittee to address that, with the report being worked on for that subcommittee for over a year, with recommendations completed in 2017, and then those recommendations were adopted by the entire board in 2017. Now, this is a separate issue from what I just talked about, and it's not the reason why I'm voting in favor of this today. But I will say this, the Kent County Land Bank demonstrated an unwillingness to implement those recommendations noted in the land bank, and even appeared to perform opposite of those recommendations. For example, they renamed the entity, they modified its mission statement, they created a partnership to sell modular homes, and it began providing services outside of Kent County. All without any, a lot of us found out for the first time when there were reports provided to this board. So that's a separate issue. That's not the reason why we're doing this. People can claim that this is being punitive. No, this is about a program that we adopted in 2011. It did its job, it did it well, and we promised to the citizens of Kent County at that time, we would close it down when it did its job. Now, the county board does retain the option of creating a new land bank down the road should circumstances ever change and we need to worry about blight again, or if we want to have some other mission that is part of what this board, this board, not the Kent County Land Bank Board, this board wants it to do. And other jurisdictions, such as the city of Grand Rapids and others, can work with the state land bank via intergovernmental agreement. That statute says that any township, city, village may enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state authority, providing for the transfer of the authority of tax-reverted property held by the county, city, township, or village for title clearance, for the disposition of proceeds from the state of the property, and for other activities authorized under this act, including a return or transfer of property under the controlled authority to such county, city, township, or village. An intergovernmental agreement under this section may not provide for separate legal or administrative entity to administer or execute the agreement under Section 7. So hopefully, that answers your question, Commissioner Skaggs. And so to say that all this stuff's going to come crashing to a halt is wrong, it's false, it's fake news, call it whatever you want, because you're going to be able to do everything that was done before, any jurisdiction, Plainfield, city of Grand Rapids, some village of Sparta, anybody that wants to do it, all they have to do is enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state land bank authority, and they will be able to do the same things that they did before. So that's where we are today, folks. We are at a time where we are serving up what we said we would back in 2011. We did our job, we did it well, and now we need to hold true to that commitment and end this organization. I will next call on Commissioner Hennessy.
Wow. This is our version of lame duck. We get the proposal a week ago, and we're going to be voting on a final action now. I'm, you know, like the other commissioners who've spoken to oppose this resolution, I find it upsetting, but there's been a grandiose look at this. At the risk of being called taking a fragmented look at it, I prefer to call it focused, I will look at new development, which is where I have been involved in working over the years. I got involved even before I was a commissioner, because it was really important to me to be able to create a strong community, to create good housing, was going to create the neighborhoods that we needed, it was going to strengthen our city, keeping our city strong. This is the core of Kent County. It was always and is important to me. Paul Hahn spoke today, and yesterday, he wrote us a note, and I was quite taken by it. He said, he talked about the land bank. This is a huge lever that we have in our community to do the right things with these properties, to make them safe, to make them affordable housing, and to get rid of blight. And Helen Lehman, the director of new development, showed two pictures, and they were taken just this week. One was of a home that we had an open house for, our 50th home, we're not a big group, but our 50th home that we had an open house for. There were about, I would, we didn't take attendance, but I would guess that there were 70 or so people who came through the doors for the open house. And these were all people who were, you know, involved with getting this done, whether they were volunteers who worked in the yard, who tore down walls, the contractors, the subcontractors who might have worked with the electrical and plumbing systems, the banks, the mortgage companies, they all had representatives, Mishda was there, the appraisers, the appliance dealers. We work with all of these people. This is really a public-private partnership right like that. And if we receive money from outside sources through our partners, the land bank, which really has helped us with the quiet titles that make these things move more efficiently, and with the land bank that helps us to leverage money, and with the city that particularly is useful to us in terms of finding sources of money for working on these properties, well, then, if we have that kind of support, these properties are sold to people who will pay taxes and who will invest by their presence and their involvement in our community. And they are also first-time home buyers who meet financial criteria to own the homes. I've looked at, I've got about a list of properties here that we've worked on in the recent past, and we have put over $2 million into these properties, and the property has gone from being, you know, the delinquent tax value, because they've been emptied, they've been derelict, they're distrust, from being worth that to selling at about $125,000. They sell at the appraised value. So they sell to continue to be viable entities, to build a street, to build a neighborhood. We do prepare, and it's not uncommon, as I talk about the $2 million we invest, it's not uncommon for us to spend $28,000, even up to $34,000 for lead abatement. When someone buys one of our homes, it will not have asbestos in it, it will not have lead in it. They are going to be safe for the children to be raised in. I talked about the house that we had, the open house for. The other one that we were working at yesterday and pouring the concrete for is another house that will, it's in an area where we've worked on several, a pocket neighborhood where we've worked on several homes, and the entire neighborhood is coming back. We do take care of blight to keep our community strong and vibrant. We are creating affordable housing. We are making these properties safe for our children. And I will say, this was a strategy of the lead task force, to use the land bank to keep our children free from lead poisoning. And it does not cost us directly in terms of our tax money. The land bank is self-sufficient, it's an authority. And like I began, we leverage money. Is the original purpose served, and it's all over? No. I've given two examples of work this week, that it is very, very, the purposes for the land bank, the purposes to help our neighborhoods remain very, very strong. It's ongoing, and for me, it's house by house, and it's neighborhood by neighborhood as we work toward this end.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I wanted to thank Treasurer Parrish for his words, and I know Ken and I talked quite a bit since the inception of this, because this was not a really politically expedient thing to do. I took a lot of heat for this decision, to support this back in the day, along with a lot of other people. But the reason why I supported it wasn't so much about what we were supposed to do, which was eliminate blight, but we were guaranteed and insured that there wouldn't be any work to do what they weren't supposed to do, which, when we talk about mission creep, that's where that comes from. This was strictly, and it wasn't ambiguous, I think everyone knew what the mission statement was. And I hear a lot about the affordable housing component within the framework of this idea. Just like to say, the affordable housing was supposed to be derived from eliminating blight. That's where the affordable housing was coming from. It didn't mean go out and create affordable housing in this county and other counties. It was the affordable housing that came part and parcel from eliminating the blight. That's what that was supposed to be about. I've heard some talk about Sparta, since I represent Sparta, I can tell you that the work that they've done up there with the foundry project was fantastic, that Sparta benefited greatly. The sale still hasn't been completed, but the cleanup that took place because of the work with the DEQ was much appreciated, and that fell within the confines of what they were supposed to do. The other thing about Sparta is kind of unusual, is we talk a lot about a need for affordable housing. Sparta just approved a new development, which is just the opposite. It's for high-end housing on the west end of M37, which, if you've ever heard me talk, that's hallowed ground over there, because that's, you know, prime ag. This happened to be zone ag 2, but the reason why they're putting high-end in is because Sparta's inundated with starter homes. A lot of them are for sale. So at least in that little slice, there's a lot of homes for sale that are available, and it's a great place to come shop. Want to thank Stan Ponstein for serving on the board. I know where Stan's heart is, and in a lot of ways, he's kind of the sacrificial lamb serving on that board. It's not an easy position to sit on, and, you know, I know where his heart is, and I really appreciate all the work you've done on that, Stan. Yeah, you know the quote from Ronald Reagan? I had it keyed up on my phone. I think that is, there's a lot of truth to that. One of the things I like about Kent County that doesn't hold true with Kent County, we do stay in our lane, and when a program is no longer viable, or something that is ready to retire, we retire it. I'm hoping that we never get to that point like we have in the past where we needed the land bank. Once again, I, I really appreciate the work of, of Dave and his staff. I think he, in a lot of ways, was a victim of his own success, because he was hard-charging, turned a lot of properties around, and the blighted issue started to shrink, and I think that's where this other stuff came from. I think his heart's in the right place, it just falls outside of our mission and the things that they were supposed to do. So I'm open to any conversations in the future about reopening this, to look at specific problems that are coming up in the future. It may be different than what we had those many years ago when we first created it. So we've got to be flexible in that regard. And I think that is it for me. I appreciate the time.
Okay, are there any other, okay, now they come out. Commissioner Mast.
Thank you Chair. I'm losing my voice unfortunately, I had, I had a lot of things to kind of talk about too. But, you know, we've, I tell our tensions are rising, I think I would like to move that we make, that I, I'll make a motion that we table this situation for, I think as Dave Volkowski said at the finance committee, till February 5th, to, to start getting this thing going, because I don't think we're, we're accomplishing any things, we've all got our own opinion about what has to go on. Unfortunately, I think there's a perception that we don't have an affordable housing crisis in our community, we do have a horrible housing crisis. There's a perception that the land bank shouldn't deal anything with that, yeah, okay, but somebody has to.
He's got a motion on table.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Mast to table this to, what did you say?
Well, I think February 7th, February 5th.
I think he's technically making a motion to postpone, because tables to the next meeting, but postpone to the, fine, return it to finance on February 5th.
Well, it wouldn't go back to finance, it would come to this board.
So then it would be postponed to February 14th, full commission.
And was there a second to the port? All right, so that's the motion before us. Any questions or comments on that? Yes.
I mean, Mike, just to quickly again get back to the point of, there are many questions we have. I, as the chair pointed out, I, I hope, I hope my comments, though they had a bit of emotion behind them, they, I'm not trying to say chicken little, the sky's falling. However, again, communications with Mayor Bliss, we don't know where the property actually is going to go. Is it going to go to Kent County? Is it go back to the city? We don't know these things. We don't know that, like, what is truly the customer service value of the state land bank to get this stuff done? We don't know the cost of a Plainfield Township for, and, and again, Plainfield Township, their manager was very clear, they have very few properties that go through the land bank. However, when they have those few properties, it's extremely quick and effective. And again, Ronald Reagan didn't say that often about government, but they did in Plainfield Township, land bank is quick and effective. So we don't know what's happening. And again, I do not believe if we vote today to end the land bank, there'll be wailing and gnashing of teeth. However, we need, we need that little bit of time to really look at these pieces. In May of 2017, after that year of deliberation, we did not say do these things or else, we said do these things and we'll be back in 2020 to have a conversation. So I think we need, we owe it to ourselves to wait the six, seven weeks and, and we go from there.
Commissioner Bonk.
Thank you Chair. I had opportunity to talk to Supervisor Holman this week about this issue. He's much in favor of the land bank. I says, Bob, here's the situation, the land bank is not listening, they're not responding to this board, I have a switch, an on and off switch, we have 19 buttons here, and it's either go or no-go. I went through the review committee, and that committee was almost contentious as this one is today. We told the land bank to put on the brakes, to listen to the county board, and they did not do that. I'm willing to give them one more chance, but I'll tell you what, my finger is on the trigger, and I have no problem at all of ending the work of the land bank or redoing the land bank in the, sometime in the near future. But they're not listening, and I don't know if your financial model is broke, I don't know what the situation was, I'm not that close to it, but I can tell you this, it's not working what's going on today. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion in front of us right now is one to table, I'm sorry, postpone to February 14th. Are there any comments on that, not the heart of the motion?
I just want to clarify, yes, it would be in favor of postponing and a no vote would be in favor of not postponing.
Roll call vote please.
All right, any other comments on the motion to table?
Postpone.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you Chair. I, you know, I, I can understand to some extent the, the thinking that let's push this down the road six weeks, and then, then we'll take it up. Because we have some unanswered questions. Well, my sense of this is there will always be some unanswered questions in this process. In fact, if you look at the protocol that's called for in the event of a notice of intent to withdraw, there are lots of unanswered questions that have to get resolved in the defined process, which we are proposing that would now be 12 months. So we're not going to have all of our questions answered whether we do it today or whether we look at this six weeks from now. It's suggested that when we approved our report in 2017, we made a commitment that we wouldn't look at this again until 2020. I've read that report carefully, it, it doesn't say that, it does say that we'll look at the need issue, but certainly doesn't suggest that, by the way, all of these conditions that we're asking the land bank to take on, you can disregard it for 35 months as long as by the 36 months you have it done. So I don't think that that would be a fair reading of that report to suggest that we necessarily gave them three years to do this. And then with respect to, is this a surprise? Well, so I, as some of you know, I did not put this on the agenda, and maybe I wouldn't have, not my prerogative, not my call, but it would be, it would be unfair to suggest that our deliberation and consideration of what should a land bank be is a surprise to any of us. It has been on the deliberation block since I've started as a commissioner. We looked at it extensively in 2015, 16, and 17. We debated this issue and continue to look at it since. So I'm, I'm not surprised by this issue, I'm not surprised by the, the dynamics that we're, we're addressing. And the last point is, and I, I heard this from a colleague of mine, oh, not named, that suggests ambiguity is, is a problem. And I think the reference was ambiguity, we don't have all the questions answered, but ambiguity can be a problem, and putting it back another six weeks only puts on another six-week period of ambiguity, which I don't think is good for anybody. And finally, I have good reason to believe that the vote isn't going to be any different after the new commission is, is sworn in than it would be now. So I see no particular value in kicking the can on the vote.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'm going to keep this short since we're about to vote on tabling it. I definitely support it, Commissioner Mast, because we do need more information, but at the same time, I definitely want to say that our staff is exceptional, and a lot of times because of the Fair Meetings Act, it's, we're not able to meet as much as we need to meet, and the staff is acting in our direction. They're not the ones spearheading this, they basically have nothing more to do with this, but gathered information that we've asked them to gather. There's times where I've caught this staff like within 18 hours, 12 hours sometimes, of me making a public station, uh, statement to the media that involves Kent County, and they have had to turn around within 12 hours to make sure my information is correct. Well, they really have to do it within an hour or two. So I, so I know that some of those emails that we may have got last minute, that we are the commissioners, we are the commissioners, and even though I didn't know everything that was going on with the land bank, I knew there was some movement going on. I was able to call the chair twice, once on the land bank issue, and each time I had to call him this year, I could say the chair did get back with me within five or 10 minutes. But I did not request a meeting of the commissioners, and a lot of times I don't do that because of the, the Fair Meetings Act, but maybe we should call some emergency meetings like that and state it publicly that we're going to meet and there's going to be corn because there's some information we need. But I definitely don't want the public to leave thinking that we have inadequate staff because I'm the chronic complainer, like I say, if I'm not complaining about you, you've got to be doing something right. So I just keep that short and save my comments about the land bank after this vote.
Yeah, okay. And remember, again, this is on the motion to table. Commissioner Melton.
My only comment is it's, to table it is not pushing out an inevitable, I hope. It's a fact-finding and hopefully allowing so many of our community members who have asked strongly to be part of this decision-making, we're allowing them to be a part of this, yes. The bottom line is we will be the ones deciding, but not giving our community members who truly care, who truly are involved, who truly see how this has worked, way better than I have, any opportunity whatsoever before we completely dissolve something, a chance to be heard, to be listened to, to look at them and to hear what it is they have to say, I think is extremely short-sighted on our part, and I personally do not want any part of it. So for me, it's not just fact-finding, which I do want more information, it is allowing our community to, to let us listen to them. That's what we're supposed to be doing, I think.
Okay, this is a motion to table, I'll call Madam Clerk to call a roll. A yes vote means you want to push, postpone this, I'm sorry, to February 14th, and no vote would be that you want to finish the debate and, and decide this today.
Thank you Mr. Chair. On the motion to postpone Resolution 1220110 to the February 14th meeting, Commissioner Antor.
No.
Vice Chair Bolter.
No.
Commissioners Breevy.
No.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Coleman.
No.
Corndyke.
No.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
No.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
No.
Talon.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
No.
Womack.
Yes.
Bear Salfeld.
No.
Mr. Chair, you have 10, nine yays, 10 nays, the motion fails, the rest, the postpone is not adopted.
Okay, so we'll continue on with any other comments regarding the original motion that's before us, not the motion to table. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, when it comes to dissolving the land bank, this morning on my Facebook page, I put out to the community, because looking at both sides of this, understanding that those that have some gripes with the land bank, that it's not a personal issue, I read those gripes and they, they're, they're very legitimate from the angle that they're looking for, from, and looking at real estate people, they have legitimate gripes, if you begin to understand that industry and look at it. So I didn't think this is something that's personal or something that none of us should have ever thought may happen, where the private sector and the nonprofit sector are on different sides when it comes to the land bank. So we're looking at that and then looking at all the good the land bank has done that I've seen, I felt it was fair to go to my voters and constituents. So I put on my Facebook, not my election Facebook, but my personal Facebook under Robert S. Womack, that we were making this decision today, and asked my constituents to chime in, and I'm going to see how many say get rid of the land bank, how many say keep the land bank, and I'm going to check it at 8:45, and I'm going to base my vote off that. And it was, in my community, it was 100% of those that just wrote, keep the land bank, keep the land bank, keep the land bank. And like I said, there are going to be some people that agree with my decision to vote to keep the land bank, and there are going to be those that may not like that decision, but I just want to say I respect everybody in the room. If you really look at this from our angle, you'll understand it's not personal, it's not something we should be fighting about, but I did want to take this opportunity to tell you about the good that I know of the land bank. Because a lot of people today, after this vote goes down, a lot of people are going to go their separate ways, and my community will never have a chance to really voice why there's so much support that came out of my community, the 49507 zip code, 49506 zip code today. One of those reasons is when I look in here today and we talk about housing, and we got to this, when the land bank was created and it was that blight, there wasn't so much pushback because people driving through our community were not really looking at investing in that community. As the housing market came back, now it's land-strapped, now every property is valuable. But at the same time, this is a community that was just great for the pickings because of our miseducation, even our athletes, our singers, it's as if nobody ever became a millionaire out of the ghetto. Well, that's not true. We had people that could have bought every one of those properties with 1% of the money that they make, but the miseducation of them, they had, they didn't know the value of property. Now we talk about the people that are still there today, I got a call yesterday, there's a property that somebody's looking to sell in our community for $30,000, and I go look at the property and I'm like, this is way, worth way more than this. Soon as this sells, they're going to put this back on the market at 180 or 200,000. So our zip code is a zip code that's just great for people to come into and invest. And it's sad that even some of our collegiate people, we, we, we paid for college educations in the 90s that were equipping us for jobs that wouldn't even be around in the new millennium. So it's just a right place for someone to come in and invest now because things are land-scrapped. But one thing that the land bank did in real estate for our community is David Allen had an open-door policy. Many people come invest in our community and they don't have any minorities working for them, they don't have any minorities representing them, they don't think about the neighbors when they come in, they're going to get the house, they're going to flip it, they're going to turn it over. There wasn't high concerns of making sure the lead abatement was out. After the miseducation, we would, we would, before the land bank, any house we saw, everybody would call in the radio station, tell me, they're, they're working on a house, there's not one black person or Hispanic person working on this house. They're working on things in our neighborhood, and we go and ask where can we call to get a job, and we, they don't even talk to us, they move fast like we're trying to rob them. So Dave was able to employ a lot of people, which goes back to his original mission statement. I know people say he's moved off that statement, but it's like when I'm driving to work in the morning, one of my missions is to get to work, get there on time, represent the people, but the unwritten mission statement is that I'm also trying to get there safe, and I want to drive safe, I don't want to drive drunk, I don't want to hurt anybody else, but that kind of goes without saying. When Dave started the land bank and he first hit our community, we knew it was blight, but we also knew there was going to be some inclusion. Dave talked to every area leader, and I'm not talking just in our community, I, I don't think there's a person in Kent County that doesn't know Dave. He talked to everybody in the Hispanic community, the African-American community, the Greater Grand Rapids community, uh-huh, Sparta, I mean, there's nowhere, I went to Sparta with Dave once. There were some African-Americans were interested in properties in Sparta, and they, and they weren't talking to Dave mostly as the land bank, they were just talking as, does anyone in the neighborhood, and Dave lived in the neighborhood, so it's like, does anyone in the neighborhood know anyone in Sparta? Dave, I do. So just he could connect people because he cared enough, not just to see the top-tier people, when I say people is not just race and ethnicity, at the time Dave met me, I was not a commissioner. At the time Dave met me, I was not a commissioner, I was not an owner of anything, I was someone you would call maybe a fifth tier leader in my community, a leader in a musical genre, a voice for people with concerns, and Dave had got in contact with me there. I bring this up really to say, no matter where this vote goes, Dave has helped bring that community to a new level in understanding of real estate, inclusion and participation. So when the, if, if the, when the private sector returns to that community, they're, they're gonna have high expectations. They're not going to sit back now that they see African Americans doing demolition, now that they see African Americans and Hispanic contractors getting information on where to go get trained for lead mediation so they can be involved. They're not gonna just sit there and forget that this has happened in nine years. So no matter how the vote goes, and I've been writing down everybody's name that came up, where they work at, um, because my community needs to know who these people are. 'Cause these people may be invested in the community, they're probably already invested. I'm not going to jump to any conclusion and say that people, um, didn't try to contact our community, which I don't think they did, but I'm not going to blame people as if it's just their responsibility. 'Cause if you want something in life, you have to go for it. So I continue to motivate my community to reach out to companies and not be afraid. And sometimes you get no and just 'cause you get a no, don't hate anybody. You never know why these decisions are at that time and a no today may become a yes tomorrow. But, um, I wanna thank Dave for, um, at least keeping those doors open and involving this community. One thing about Grand Rapids, and I'm gonna hurry up, um, that I don't like in Grand Rapids. When I go back to Harlem, I, I'm born and raised in Grand Rapids, went to Harlem at 17, came back in my late 30s. When I go to New York, the Apollo Theater is already gonna be there. When I come back to Grand Rapids, I'm like, they sold the Gerald I. Ford School that the President of the United States went to? Why would they do that? So this county continues to be the county where nothing good ever lasts forever. And if the land bank is closed, I think it's gonna be one of those things we remember. Um, a good thing that just didn't last, as Ken Parrish said, it would've been great if we could've had our B plan ready, uh, for a day like this. 'Cause if anybody could, uh, help make sure that it worked the right way, it would be Ken Parrish, a very honorable man. Um, but today, just looking at both sides, we talked a little about the private sector, but there were no African American or Hispanic nonprofits that came either. And the community isn't even looking at that. To understand that when we do have minority nonprofits and they step out and they start talking about, uh, bringing in money to help themselves and show their kids an example that we can help ourselves, a lot of nonprofits compete with those African American nonprofits. A lot of time, there's a lot of backdoor whispering that they can't be trusted or, um, they look for one person on that board or something that's been a part of their history of somebody's past, that the, the, the competition for nonprofit dollars in Grand Rapids is very high. It's higher than any city that I've ever gone to. And I've never went to a city with this many minorities where there's not one, one minority nonprofit that's being funded in that community. And, uh, even starting a neighborhood association, there's been a, restarting a neighborhood association with African Americans, there's been so much talk and backlash about it getting started. But as Jim said, we wanna stay on, um, focus. Um, I just had to put inclusion there because we got a great, um, group of people on both sides today. In my community, the 49507, we will never have a chance to have all of you in the same room again, just to tell you how we feel. And, um, you may not believe me, but you can go to my Facebook, Robert S. Womack. Uh, my community supports, um, the land bank full heartedly. Um, and I have to represent that vote today for my community, so I will be voting yes. I hope you respect my vote as I respect yours. Uh, we're all too old here to act like children and fight and fuss and think everybody would agree with us. I respect everybody else's opinion, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, there's some people that are asking to speak a second time and we've been, I've been very liberal in allowing people to exceed the five minutes. So if this is your second time, I would ask you to please try to be brief. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the time to express some kind of broad concerns. I do have a technical question that's of concern and that is, when I've tried to think about what might happen moving forward, uh, I, my understanding is that if this is approved today, that basically stops the land bank from initiating new kinds of things, new projects, new, uh, quiet title processes and so on. And I guess I'd like to clarify that because if we take a year now to wind the land bank down, where do the organizations that we've heard from, where do they go for that kinda stuff? Because the land bank isn't, the Kent County Land Bank isn't officially over, but there's still a need for some of those tools. And if there is a local land bank, I doubt that they could get them from the state. So can anybody clarify that?
Go ahead, Linda.
Under the terms of the Intergovernmental Agreement between the Treasurer and the Michigan Land Bank Authority that set up the Kent County Land Bank, the termination provisions within that document talk about after the notice is given, the land bank authority is to wind down its affairs. It has, um, a couple different paragraphs in here that the first thing they are to do is to address their debts, liabilities, obligations to creditors and pay all expenses. So we would methodically work through that process. The land bank would take the lead on it because it's their obligation to wind down their affairs. But that's one reason why, um, the, the, the motion shifted it right before finance from a six month to a 12 month, to give it time to orderly transition those, those issues out, whether it's Grand Rapids making an agreement with Michigan Land Bank and then they get assigned over, but giving the time to allow for an orderly transition of the pending projects.
Right, but if I get to follow up, Chair, that where do, my understanding is they have to wind things down, they can't start anything new. So a nonprofit developer who needs clear title on a tax for closed property, where do they go during that one-year wind down period for that tool? Can they act, I mean, my understanding is the land bank here is the only place they can get that until it goes out of existence. Then the state can, can do it.
In, in a generic sense, generic sense. If somebody needs a clear title, any person can approach the circuit court and get clear title.
So that's what they'll have to do.
Okay. Commissioner Steck.
Um, thank you, Chair. So, uh, let me, uh, again, start by phrasing what I understand the issue before us, and that is whether or not we exercise that only remaining right that the county has under the Intergovernmental Authority Agreement. Um, and that's in 8.02 to notify with respect to an intent to withdraw. It is not, as some may have characterized, as I see it, um, a, a motion to take the land bank out to Calder Plaza and execute it. It is an invitation, however, to undertake a conversation over the next 12 months to engage in, after resetting this process, what do we conclude is the most effective, most appropriate process to go forward with as we then measure the needs? Does it include a conversation about some potential wind down of relationships between the land bank and some of our communities? As I read 803, it is open to the potential for, uh, if there needs to be some additional, um, agreements or implementations or title work or clearing titles in the process. I don't think it precludes that. That can be done. So in the process of doing the wind down, there is a fair amount of flexibility in doing that. So in that 12 months, what would we be able to do? We would be able to assess whether or not, uh, we need something else in place to deal with housing needs. Do we need a skinny down land bank to only provide clear title process? I'm not saying we do or we don't, I'm saying it's a conversation that's available to us. Does the Innolab folks want to create a new entity? They would have the ability and plenty of time to do that. Would they then have the ability to apply for 501(c)(3) status? They would. Would we then have the capacity to enter an agreement to transfer some or portions of these programs or operations to this new entity? We would. All this does is it allows us to essentially reset the table, assess the needs and move forward and implement them. So when you look at the motion before us, it raises the question, do we use that tool that the IGA gives us? In this space, in the conversation we've heard, there's been a lot of talk about how successful and how capable and appropriately, um, responsible the land bank has been to the need that we defined for them. There's been a lot of conversation about how good they are, how innovative they are, the programs that they pursue. So all of that's true, but why would we consider then moving to this next conversation? For me, I think you need to go back to the history of what brings us here today. When we created the land bank in 2010, 2011, as the chair indicated, there was a defined mission. Thereafter, there were ongoing reviews and evaluations of the land bank, 2011, 2013, and then most recently in 2015, 16 and 17. Why did we look at it in 2016 and then approve a report in 17? It was because this commission felt that there were some behaviors, some activities by the land bank that we disagreed with. Whether they were undertaking programs that we thought ought to be within their ambit or whether or not they were doing them in ways that we thought ought to be differently. Whatever it is, in 2016, after an extensive analysis, this commission looked at the possibility of exercising its one authority, its one power under the agreement, and that is to ask for a withdrawal. It doesn't have the ability to go in and say, "All right, let's fix it this way," or "We're gonna go ahead and make this change," or "We're gonna change who sits in this role or that role." It has one capacity, one authority, and that is to withdraw. It didn't exercise that responsibility, it did not exercise that option. Instead, what it said is, "We won't do that, but here's what we think the land bank needs to do in order to comply with and to be what we think it should be." There's the talk about, "Well, let's not throw the baby out with the bathwater." We didn't. We said, "Here's how you can fix it." And this board approved that. And it identified some specific things that we wanted to see the land bank do. Now, we may not have agreed with that, some of us probably didn't, but the commission still approved this statement as being the statement of what the land bank should be about. We said, for example, that we are asking it not to expand its mission. Not whether or not that mission they want to expand to is great, not that there isn't a need, not that they're doing a tremendous job at it, but we asked them not to expand it. They did. We asked them not to utilize the process that avoids the auction. We know that the statute allows them to do that as long as the taxing jurisdiction does it. We asked them not to do it. Didn't follow that. I can go through these others too as to whether or not they complied with those, but the fact is we were very clear about what it is that we wanted the land bank to do. Not because we could dictate it, because they knew and we knew that our only recourse is withdraw. On the basis of that, it's clear to me that the land bank concluded not to comply with those. It concluded to go a different direction. I don't think it did it by oversight, I don't think it did it maliciously, I don't think it did it because it just didn't know what was going on. I think they intentionally evaluated the mission that they wanted to pursue. Fact is, it wasn't the mission that we had defined and redefined in 2017. So they've made a choice to go a different direction. Again, I don't say it's a terrible direction, it's bad, they're addressing some significant issues in the community, but it's not what this commission had asked it to do. So the land bank leaves us really two choices, right? Either we just capitulate and yield and abdicate that responsibility, or we withdraw. Those are the only two options the agreement gives us. So do we need to know more about what the commission has set forth for the land bank? I think it's clear, I think we spent a lot of time establishing it. Do we need to know more about what the land bank's intention and desire is? Again, I don't think it's clear, I think they've acted deliberately. I don't mean maliciously, but deliberately, and that's fine. Fact is that we're going in different directions. And so the only option left to us really is accept or withdraw. If withdraw meant, by the way, the execution on Calder Plaza, then I would see this differently. It does not. A withdraw compels us to have tough, difficult, complex conversations about what's in the best interest of this community and how do we best accomplish it? What do we need to do to do it? Because the way it's set up now, there's inherent tension, there's inconsistencies and there's nothing but concern about whether or not they are going in the direction we've defined or not. And we don't need to be wasting our energy and time on that. We can start this over and do it the right way. Now, in my druthers, I'd say, "Let's go back and fix it, let's go back and sit down and see if we can't redesign this thing and negotiate it out." But that's not the option given to us. The option given to us was to make a recommendation, be specific about it and ask the land bank to consider that, and they said no, for the most part. That's fine. So now we need to move to the second step. And I don't do it maliciously, I don't mean because these are not important issues that my colleagues are identifying or that many of our stakeholders are working on. They are important issues and there are ways to deal with it. However, this is not how this commission has said we wanna deal with it. We need to go back and redefine and reinvent and move forward effectively with those procedures.
Thank you. The next three comments are by people who've already spoken. Again, I implore you to keep your comments brief. Commissioner Ponstein.
Well, I'll keep it brief 'cause I think the decision's already been made and that's kind of unfortunate. The comment was quickly made that Dave Allen created the land bank, he didn't. County Commission did and the Board, Original Board of Directors, George Meek from Plainfield Township, Sharon Brinks from Kentwood, Rosalind Bliss, myself and Ken Parrish. And maybe I was asleep at the beginning meetings, a lot of things being said that the only purpose that this county commission gave the land bank was blight. And that's just not true. Define for me what blight means. You're saying that we don't have blight now, but I ask all of you to get out of your suburban home where everything's taken care of, the lawns are mowed and everything is good, and go visit those vacant lots that the city of Grand Rapids asked us to take care of and redevelop and get something on there. With the, one caveat is, they would like to see an affordable housing. And then now because some folks say there's, there's no blight by us, that there's no blight, get out of your comfort zone and go, "Look, there's plenty of blight out there." And, you know, and it's not so much, you guys wanna dissolve it, fine. I mean, I've fallen on the sword, I've been attacked politically, personally, and I don't remember many times that anyone on this commission came to my defense. Now, that's part of, I mean, policy and politics, and this is a political issue. This isn't an issue about right and wrong. We're gonna close down an organization, create ill feelings, yet we had nonprofit after nonprofit come up here and tell us of needs that are still in this community that have to do with land and housing. And what are we gonna do? We're gonna shut down the land bank and say, "Well, we're gonna recreate it." Why, I mean, one thing that government's really good at is that, "So we're gonna shut something down and then we're gonna recreate it where the infrastructure is already in the place to handle every single concern that the nonprofits came up." That's bad government. And if Ron Reagan was here today, he'd probably come to that same conclusion.
Commissioner, Commissioner Womackowski, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Chair. I have two questions that I would like to ask the Land Bank Board Chair, Treasurer. I don't know, back to that piece, is that allowed or not, since we had questions earlier in the meeting of people?
It's part of your time, so if they're brief.
They're very brief questions. I mean, in the real quick reading of the audit that was provided, it appears that you have enough assets to cover current liabilities. However, if in the dissolution it was discovered that you have more liabilities than assets, who's ultimately responsible? Is it Kent County, or did the creditors have no recourse?
The county has never pledged its full faith and credit to the, to the land, to any debt of the Land Bank. I think it, it's a question I can't answer because there is a question about where the assets will ultimately end up, whatever, if there are assets left, and I'm sure there's going to be some property or something left. So whether they will come back to the county or if they go to a successor organization, namely the state land bank, there's different, there's different opinions on that. I hope and believe that the issue of the debt will not be an issue. We believe that we will be able to make all of our debt obligations. That your question is moot, but I don't know, and we will, we've been, we've been, we always are forecasting what our sales look like. The results today may trigger some, actually, some ability to make more money on property because it might release us from some of the affordable housing restrictions that we have on some of the property, so we might actually be able to make more, which would allow us to cover the debt quicker.
Then the second quick question. One of our concerns back in the summer when we were talking about, you know, the potential of ending the ICE contract, we were worried about being joined to a lawsuit that Elickin County was part of and that we actually got out of because we had a contract, and the Land Bank was sued, like, at its inception based on its actions within the auction and all that stuff. So, I mean, is there liability for lawsuits to come against you as treasurer once the Land Bank disappears if some of these deals go bad, or is that just a law school conjecture?
I have no idea. You're, you're the attorney. You tell me.
I'm not that kind of attorney.
I don't know, so.
Commissioner Antor.
Just real quickly, I feel kind of compelled to respond to a couple of Commissioner Womack's points. If there's ever an opportunity to trade Kent County with Harlem based on community assets, I think we're doing really well here. We do not have President Ford's home anymore, but we have a beautiful presidential museum across the river, and I love you, Robert. I really do. You know I want to be your agent in the music industry, but Sparta is only seven minutes north of Grand Rapids. You get on the highway, I feel like I'm Charles Ingalls in Little House on the Prairie or something. We're right up the road. It's a very vibrant community, and it's not unlike a lot of other communities outside of Grand Rapids, and I hope you come visit us sometime. But my main point was, I really wanted to thank not only the people that are here, but the people that wrote letters to me. They were, they were not for, I didn't get a thousand form letters of the same letter thousands of times, actually, who knows, millions, maybe, but I got some really thoughtful and comprehensive correspondence from stakeholders on both sides of the issue, and they were extremely thoughtful, took a lot of time to dissect everything that they wrote, and I really appreciate that, and I think all the other commissioners appreciate that type of correspondence, so thank you very much.
Okay, I think I have one comment left, and that's Commissioner Morgan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought I'd weigh into this. A lot of respect for Ken. Ken, at the Finance Committee, I expressed just a concern that you would get together with the leadership and the, our CEO or chief executive, and today I heard you say that negotiations would cease. Does that mean you're not willing to meet with leadership or as we go through this year process? I want to make sure I understand your comment.
I believe that if you pass this resolution today, we are dead in the water. There will be no banks willing to loan us any money. There will be no organizations willing to take on long-term projects because of the continued viability. We are likely to get, in this year's audit, a qualified opinion for going concern, so I don't see much reason to negotiate after you have voted to withdraw.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that that's it. Okay, you're on number three, so please make it very quick.
I had one comment during the table discussion.
You're right. You're right, so go ahead.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Antor. There's no excuse for selling J.R. Ford School, and I was in Sparta with Christine Elmore a few times for her, for the parade, so I was looking for you. I saw your sign in front of the Oasis. I don't know if that's the best place to put your political sign, but it looked nice.
What's this got to do with the Land Bank?
All right. You didn't ask that, you didn't ask that when he, when he mentioned me coming to Sparta, so I wanted to address that. But honestly, just going back to something Phil Skaggs said about the, and I always try to bring some humor because there's just too much tension. I don't know why there's any reason for that. Leaders should expect to have differences, but Phil Skaggs said something about, when we discussed earlier about the Land Bank, that we said we would come back in three years, 2020, and discuss that, and I never heard anyone give any information on that, and I thought when the Honorable Chair did respond to Phil Skaggs, we might have missed that, and since you haven't spoken your second time, I would just, just a small question of...
Stan covered it already.
Okay, Stan covered why we didn't return back in 2020 to discuss it, as we had said, we review it in three years. I still don't understand what made it come forth at this time. That's just my question for anybody who hadn't spoken. I just wanted to keep that brief if that didn't interrupt this meeting too much. Thank you.
Yeah, it was because there was a request, the report talked about re-reviewing the whole Land Bank in 2020. This was a question about whether the recommendations made in 2017 were being on two different things. I think that that's it, so...
Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, we can have a roll call vote, so if that's the case, I would ask Madam Clerk to call roll. So this is on the resolution?
This is on the primary resolution. To vote yes would mean that you're in favor of disbanding the Land Bank. To vote no would mean that you want to continue to have the Land Bank in its current form.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 122018110, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breevy.
Yes.
Womackowski.
No.
Hennessy.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
No.
Melton.
No.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Skaggs.
No.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
No.
Bonk.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bonk, what was your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
No.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 11 yeas, eight nays. The motion passes. Resolution 122018110 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move on with the next resolution, and I will call on Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we have a Resolution 111, allowing the Grand Rapids Bar Association to lease space in one of our downtown courthouses.
Support by Commissioner Voorhees. Are there questions or comments on this item? I do not, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mast.
We had agreed on...
I'm sorry?
We had agreed on moving ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Stack.
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor, but I, for those that don't have to go over there every day or want to go over there every day, maybe not appreciate the need for these kinds of facilities and these kinds of places there in order to be able to do what we do, so I think it's a badly needed process, and I commend or acknowledge the Bar Association for making this request and taking on that responsibility, so thank you for that, and I support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Stack. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, admittedly, I was spending time on the Land Bank. So maybe it's in the resolution. How long is this for? And if the administrator can just comment on, I know that we're, we talk about the space need study, and, you know, are we able to decide that we don't want to lease this space if we, the space study says that we don't have time or the space to lease 1,200 square feet?
Linda, would you respond?
Commissioner, the agreement is for an initial term of three years with two optional three-year renewals. The space is approximately 1,200 square feet. We are limited in a general sense on what we can lease out in the courthouse due to the tax-exempt bonds that are in place on the courthouse, so this lease, together with all other leases for the snack shop and the LAC, are less than 5% of the total building. That's our threshold that we have to stay under.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? I see none. This is not a roll call vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to the fifth agenda, and I call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. I move the Resolution 112 about the strategic capital improvement amendment.
Support. Support by Commissioner Morgan. Are there questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 122018112, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breevy.
Yes.
Womackowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
No.
Bonk. Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, one nay, zero, one not voting. The motion passes. Resolution 122018112 is adopted.
Okay, a quick point of order. Commissioner Bonk had to excuse himself, was not feeling well. Commissioner Mast has another appointment and is asking to depart. We are planning to recognize him later in the meeting, so what I asked him is if he would come back to a meeting next year where we can recognize him then and hand him his resolution and so forth, and he said that that would be acceptable, so we'll give you an excuse, but you have to come back.
And I'm extremely sorry, fellow commissioners, I was going to, yeah, I made another commitment many, many months ago.
Yeah.
And if I had known this was on the agenda at that point, I would have not made this other commitment.
But we'll, we'll have you speak to our group, too.
I'm running a half hour late already.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We are then on Resolution F, and I will call, call on Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to move Resolution 113 of today's date from Human Resources, a labor agreement between the Kent County Sheriff's Association and us.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comment on this resolution? Commissioner Skaggs. And we'll have, we'll have Harold back and let him address the board at that time.
I know, but today was his day.
So Commissioner Skaggs, you had a question on the resolution.
Thank you, Chair. There's, there are no changes between what was brought forward to the Legislative and Human Resources Committee that are in these next couple of items. This went through as expected. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 122018113, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioner Breevy.
Yes.
Womackowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The resolution is adopted.
For the next, I've, I've heard a request of combining the next three resolutions in one, and since Commissioner Bonk isn't here, I will call on Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolutions 114, 115, and 116 of today's date.
Second. And that's been supported by Commissioner Skaggs. Any questions or comments on those? I see none. Those are roll call votes. Madam Clerk.
On the motion to adopt Resolutions 122018114, 115, and 116, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Breevy.
Yes.
Womackowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Bonk.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motions, the motion passes. Resolutions 122018114, 115, and 116 are adopted.
Thank you. We then move to Agenda Item 9, which is public comment, and this is one minute public comment. If there's anybody that'd like to step forward, please do so now.
Kent Parish County Treasurer. Now that the decision has been made, I would request that you move forward with the reappointment of board members Ponstein and Mas. They were, apparently were withheld from the legislative agenda earlier this month, and so after your meeting on the third, we'll still only have three board members, and could really use all five as we work our way through the process. So if you could get those two gentlemen reappointed, that would be great.
I assume those will be part of the normal slate that we would approve on the first meeting of next year?
Well, my info through the majesty's slate.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other public comment? Yes, go ahead.
Robert Smith, 7015, Mindew Drive in Byron Center. During all of the commentary earlier in which you let the comment, in which you let the commentary and discussion for the Land Bank vote go for over two hours and allowed commissioners to speak two, three times, at the start of which, this room was full. By the time you got around to actually voting, half of the people in this room had left, which shielded many of you from your constituents knowing which way you personally voted. There was a lot of talk of transparency. There is nothing transparent about that, nothing at all. Yes, there is still a need for affordable housing. I work, my, my Union's Veterans Committee works with community rebuilders a lot with I work, my, my Union's Veterans Committee works with community rebuilders a lot with their rehabilitation program for homeless veterans and their family. You know, these are people who could have made use of the land bank.
Thank you. That's your one minute. And by the way, we do keep minutes, and we do have a recording that's available for anybody to see of the entire meeting. Any other public comment this morning? I do not see any. We will move to reports of commissioners. Any reports? Commissioner Corn dyke.
I'll be short. 30 seconds. Passenger activity at the airport continues to increase. November, over November numbers was 16.97% increase, and we're up over 16% year-to-date. Yesterday, we were happy to celebrate the first flight coming in from Phoenix to our airport. Now the 27th direct flight out of Grand Rapids to another city.
Which airline?
American Airlines.
Okay, great. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. The DDA met last week. I will not report on all the actions, but just call your attention to this speech document that I left at your places. This is the annual report of DGRI, incredible compilation of the accomplishments of that organization for downtown, which affects our entire county. Thank you.
Any other reports this morning? I do not see any. At this point, I would ask Vice Chair Bolter and Commissioner Corn dyke to join me at the podium. As we know, this is Commissioner Corn dyke's final meeting with us. He has served 14 years in total, broken up between 2001 and 2006, and again, 2011 through our current date. And Dan has been an outstanding board member, always, always at our meetings, very focused, hardworking, probably one of the hardest working commissioners I think we have, and I know that he always wants to do what's best for Kent County. I'm going to have Vice Chair Bolter read the proclamation for Commissioner Corn dyke now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we've had a long meeting, and I will try to read quickly, but I do want to give Dan his due. He's served our county very well, very, very committed commissioner, and we're going to miss you. And you won the prize for the longest meeting. Didn't want you to leave, so. Whereas Commissioner Dan Corn dyke will be leaving this Board of Commissioners at the end of his, his present term in office. Commissioner Corn dyke previously served on the Board from 2001 through 2006, and ran for office again, and was sworn in on January of 2011 as the Kent County Commissioner representing District 18, and has most diligently served the residents of Kent County for the last eight years. Commissioner Corn dyke became Vice Chair of the Legislative and Human Resources Committee the same year he was sworn in, and became Chair of the Legislative and Human Resources Committee the following year. In 2013, Commissioner Corn dyke was elected by his peers as Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, and served in that capacity for three consecutive years. Commissioner Corn dyke faithfully served his constituents and dedicated his time by also serving on the Board of Public Works, Kent County Dispatch Authority, the Drain Board, Human Services Committee, Flatboard, and Millennium Park Architectural Advisory Review Board. Commissioner Corn dyke was appointed to the Gerald R. Ford Airport Authority and selected as Vice Chair of the Authority and became Chair of the Authority in January of 2018. Most notably, the airport welcomed its 3,000,000th passenger this year, which is six straight years of record growth for the airport. Therefore, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes Commissioner Dan Corn dyke's loyal service, outstanding talents, and honesty to the Kent County community. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners reluctantly bid Commissioner Dan Corn dyke farewell and wish him much happiness and success in the future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be given to Commissioner Corn dyke as a small token of our appreciation, and I have no idea what's in this package.
I really appreciate the honor of serving this Board of Commission in these chambers for 14 years. It's funny, because I have another one of these at my office that I got from Roger when he was Chair, and I left in 2006. So, you know, these last eight years, it's been a great run. A lot of good things have been accomplished. You know, I wrote them all down. You guys don't want to hear it all, but I really want to, first of all, thank my family. They put up a little lot. Then thank you to this Board of Commissioners. I just want to say one thing that I've always tried to do is, you know, show up and do the work to the best of your ability. That's all that your constituents want, and that's all that I want as, you know, a citizen of Kent County. It's been a great run. You're good folks. Keep doing the good work. And today, things got a little contentious, but most of the time, things work really well here. Please, 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 keep this county more like the county that I came into and that we've done for the last eight years, and, and don't let the partisanship become a part of our discussion. I mean, just, you know, work together, work through the committee process, whatever processes we have here, because I don't want to come here and sit back there and listen to what I have to listen to when I go down to Lansing. No one likes the partisanship stuff. So work together. I know you guys want to work together, and most of the time, we do. And I told people when I went door-to-door, you know, you can come to our meetings, and most of the time, you can't tell who the Republicans or Democrats are. And that's a good thing. Keep up that good work. Thank you.
Back for a Michigan graduate. I thought this was the roast, but I guess I'll have to roast them a little later.
Well, you will have miscellaneous coming up. I, I will say, we will continue to hear from Dan going forward, because he is going to hopefully be reappointed here to the Kent County, or the Grand Rapids Airport Board.
No, it's the Gerald R.
Gerald R.
You know.
What do they say?
Just saying.
Yeah, sorry. Anyway, so we'll be hearing from Dan going forward, which is a good thing. So, we are at miscellaneous, so Roger, here's your chance.
I would like to thank Dan and wish him well in his endeavors. It was great to serve with you. That's about as long-winded as I get, Dan, so.
Commissioner Womack.
I just want to thank Commissioner Corn dyke for his service, and for the example of leadership, and always being first class, and I'd like to say the same to Harold Mast, who won't be with us next year. In Grand Rapids, Michigan, our Chief of Police did retire, so I had a chance to go say goodbye to our chief. I think he did an excellent job in Grand Rapids. I'd like to thank him for keeping the doors of communication open. I think he helped overcome some historical problems that were here before he got here. So I definitely told him, don't blame yourself for some of the controversies that our community really respects him for having an open door policy to finally get those solved. So I wish him well in his endeavors, and just want to say happy holidays to the public and our staff and the rest of our colleagues here on the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I too want to acknowledge that not just Dan, but Commissioner Mast. I've had the privilege of serving with some great people over my 39 years, and I always try to look at my fellow elected officials and, and find all the good things and things I can learn from both of you. You both are a different type of commissioners, and I've learned a lot from both of you, and I appreciate that, and I hope our paths continue to cross. On a more different note, when I was at the finance meeting and even other meetings, you know, this coming year, we've got to rework public comment. I think it's so rude when someone's speaking that someone up front is saying, "Two minutes." If you watch the public speakers today at the Finance Committee, even the ICE people, when you're interrupting someone in the middle of a statement that they came here to make, that's just plain rude. And we, with our AAA bond rating, with our multimillion-dollar budget, that we can't have a clock here that the speaker can see and not be interrupted while they're speaking. And I think that these TSA dates, I think that's what they call these black things, I think they've served a purpose too, and, and I think it, it sends the wrong message that somehow we're closed off from that thing, and I think it's time that those things get removed too.
Okay, Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank Dan for the leadership that he showed to our board and the many years that he's been involved. You know, I feel like I've learned a lot from him, and, you know, also Harold, too. He's done a great job on the many boards that he's served on, but if we could all just be a little more like Dan, that'd be great, because, you know, he comes to every meeting, not even if he's on that particular committee or not, but he's here for finance, he's here for legislative, and he's involved, so he's always in tune with what's going on. Thanks for all your time and all the work you've done here for us.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I had a point, I'm going to make a miscellaneous that I think is important to share, because there were two points brought up during our debate. One was the, at finance, and as Finance Chair, I think this is important to address for anyone who decides to take the four hours to watch the tape. The, the action item that was changed prior to the finance meeting was something that was well within our right to do, and it changed the timeframe from six months to 12 months. And I think that was an important addition to have happen. So I will defend that for the comment that was made by a commissioner that that was an issue. I will also add, as a Chair of the Finance Committee, when it comes to calling on folks from the audience to come up and speak, generally it's for questions that we don't have the answers to from our administrator or from our legal, and we didn't have any of those arise, so that's why there were additional people called up during our meeting to address different questions. Now with that, I would like to take my moment to share with Dan a moment that we had. So I was here when Sandy got the proclamation, when she had her last day. Her last day was on my first day, and I thought, wow, that was really nice. And Dan turned to me and he said, "Oh, no, you don't ever want one of those." He goes, "That means it's over." And I personally am so grateful, because I came on here in a process that was a little unique the most. I was appointed first before I ran, and I'd like to say that Dan did a phenomenal job. He had really, as Chair, a historic moment with multiple commissioners that had to be appointed. Hasn't happened prior, and hopefully doesn't happen going forward, but I just thought I'd say that I thought he did a phenomenal job with that, and for that, I will be always grateful.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know why I'm so emotional, but I guess after today, I wonder what the heck you got me into, because you're the one that appointed me to this board.
So I leave my legacy.
Yeah, in all seriousness, though, you know, I just, I just appreciate you giving me that opportunity, and, you know, I was a girl from a small town and moved here for my husband and never thought or dreamed that I would be on this board, and it's in large part to your faith in me, so I really, really appreciate that, and I want you to know, I really appreciate your leadership, and I'm sorry I caused you some heartburn, maybe in my first year or two, but appreciate everything you did.
Water over the dip.
Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Jones, I appreciate your comment about the action item. I, I've seen that happen many, many times throughout my tenure here, where it's fluid. Sometimes we get stuff last minute, and I don't feel like there was any problem this time. And to Dan, I, man, I really appreciate your leadership and your friendship. We started out kind of rocky, because I was a Notre Dame fan, and Dan being a Michigan fan, I, I, you know, I wasn't, I was giving him a lot of grief, and he took it in good stride. He took it a lot better than my family members do. But I understand, I understand. But, yeah, I got Phil and Wayman, too, that I probably have to apologize to, but anyhow, I just really appreciate all your work, and just watching you work hard, that's kind of a lost trait a lot of times, and you, I've seen you at all the meetings, even meetings that didn't even pertain to, you know, your jurisdiction or your constituents. You're always there, and I appreciate all that, and I'm going to miss you, but we'll have to maybe sit down and watch a ballgame. There you go.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I already have sent my sentiments to Commissioner Corn dyke, so I won't say anything more here, but I'm hoping very much that the, the door that Harold Mast opened for me as far as being part of the veterans group and the choosing of the Veteran of the Year has been just such an amazing privilege and honor, and I, I do hope to carry that forward in his absence, and learned a lot from him. So I'm, I'm very sorry that he could not stay long enough to, to be recognized also, because very, very good commissioner and a lot of good qualities, so.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Two things. First, I want to acknowledge all of my colleagues for the way we handled the, the debate here. This was a very difficult, contentious issue. We clearly did not agree as we came into this. We probably still don't agree on it, but, but I think that all of you handled yourselves very professionally, and, and I acknowledge you for that. The second thing is, unlike Commissioners Jones and Bolter. Commissioner Corn dyke didn't appoint me as a commissioner, and so my first introduction to Dan was, was a little sour. I thought he was pretty incompetent. But I have learned to, to respect and, and see the commitment that he has for this county and for this process, his dedication, his hard work. He has, he has set the standard, in my opinion, for service to this community as a commissioner. So, thank you for that, and I wish you all the well. Thank you.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Madam Chair, I move to clear the board.
I think those are words from the Michigan Legislature. I was voting. I was voting. I had my vote on the board when he said, "Clear the board," because somebody else wanted to offer an amendment. In the Democratic, and what are the rules we're under?
Roberts.
Roberts, yeah. In Lansing, it's Wilson, wherever it's got to be in writing, but, I mean, things change that fast, and that's why I don't, I don't want the feeling out there that some that what we did in changing from six to 12 was really out of the, out of the norm. That's all permissible. And I had it right when I was voting. They turned around and made an amendment, might, might have changed my vote, I don't know, but, but that's the process, and I'm proud to be, and thankful more than proud, thankful to be a part of the process, thankful to have worked with Dan these years, and with Harold Mast, and Merry Christmas to all of you. Eat a lot of cookies.
Certain type. Any other miscellaneous? I will find, add a, oh, okay.
I just want to say one more thing. I forgot to thank Wayman. Wayman, thank you.
Yes.
That's great, Jack. Thanks.
I, I do, I want to also say something about Dan, because he and I have served together a long time, whether it's here or in other capacities, and I served.
You and me are the last, you're going to be the last one now.
I know.
In 2010. There were six of us.
But I served as your Vice Chair for three years, and you were steady, you were competent, you were responsible, and it was a pleasure to do that. We'll miss you. So, and as far as, this is my last meeting, where I'll be hitting the gavel. I will provide some comments as, as what, as a former Chair here at a future meeting, maybe when they do the new photo or something, but.
You've got a photo next to the good-looking guy.
Yeah, exactly. So, but, but it's been an honor to serve all of you as Chair. It's not always been easy. Trust me, this year, it's not always been easy, but we, we got through it, and I still think we do some of the best work here at Kent County of any government in the state and possibly the nation. If you talk to the AAA bond guys, they tell you the whole nation. So, thank you for that. With that, I move to Item 13, which is adjournment, and call on Vice Chair Bolter, because Commissioner Talon's not here.
I make the motion. Can I do it?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dan's doing it.
Dan, yeah, Stan, perfect thing.
I make a motion to end the last meeting. So, I move to adjourn subject to the call of Chair to Thursday, January 3, 2019, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
Support? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.
I am Kent County. I am Kent County. I am Kent County.